Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Eileen Foley City Council Chambers. We are here to convene the City Council meeting for Monday, July 17, 2007. And at this time, I would like to, after having called the meeting to order, ask that the deputy city clerk call the roll.
Mayor Marshon. Assistant Mayor Farini.
Here.
Councilor Grasso.
Here.
Councilor Dwyer.
Here.
Councilor Reynold.
Here.
Councilor Panalakis.
Yeah.
Councilor Whitehouse.
Here.
Councilor Smith.
Here.
Councilor Hines.
Here.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to ask you all to rise for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which I'd like to ask Councilor Panalakis to lead us.
Please repeat acronyms. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would like to ask Councilor Ken Smith to read a proclamation regarding this year's National Night Out, which has been a very successful endeavor in the city of Portsmouth for some years now, and if he would be so kind.
Thank you, Your Honor. A proclamation: Whereas the National Association of Town Watch is sponsoring a nationwide crime, drug, and violence prevention program on August 7, 2007, known as National Night Out; and whereas the 24th Annual Night Out provides an opportunity for the city of Portsmouth to join forces with thousands of other communities across the country in promoting cooperative, community-policing-oriented crime-prevention efforts; and whereas the Portsmouth Citywide Association plays a vital role in assisting the Portsmouth Police Department through joint crime, drug, and violence prevention efforts in the city of Portsmouth and is sponsoring the National Night Out 2007 locally; and whereas it is essential that all citizens of the city of Portsmouth be aware of the importance of crime-prevention programs and the impact of their personal participation can have in reducing crime, drugs, and violence in the city of Portsmouth; and whereas police-community partnerships, neighborhood safety, awareness, and cooperation are important themes of the National Night Out program. Therefore, I, Steve Marshant, mayor of the city of Portsmouth, on behalf of the City Council, do proclaim Tuesday, August 7, 2007, as National Night Out in Portsmouth, and call upon all citizens of the city of Portsmouth to join in the nationwide, excuse me, the citywide neighborhood association and the police department and the National Association of Town Watch in supporting the 24th Annual Night Out on that date, given by my hand and the seal of the city of Portsmouth on the 16th day of July 2017, Steve Marshant, mayor of Portsmouth.
Thank you very much, Councilor Smith, and I would like to ask, at the present time, if there is anyone present from the city neighborhood associations present to accept this proclamation. If not, we'll make sure that they get it. Oh, we do, we have somebody. Could you come forward, please, and be recognized at the mic?
Hi, my name's Mary Mauer. I'm with the steering committee of the Citywide Neighborhood Association and part of Rogers Street Association.
We thank you. We'd like to give you this proclamation, and if there's anything you'd like to say to the audience regarding National Night Out, we'd certainly appreciate it.
This is the city's, I think, fifth or sixth annual National Night Out. It's a wonderful way to get involved with your community, and if, for some reason, you notice your neighborhood is not participating in National Night Out, any neighborhood has open arms, and, you know, if you're two blocks over from another neighborhood or half a mile away, you can join in anybody's National Night Out. So enjoy the evening. Thanks.
Thank you once again. Next, we have another mayoral proclamation. This time, we're happy to have Captain Brookhart and chief of the boat, Tom Wright, here from the USS Hartford. It's always great to have the Navy in town, and I would like to ask if their slight rival, our own lieutenant commander and councilor Ned Reynold, would be kind enough to read the proclamation this evening.
Thank you, Assistant Mayor. I'd be honored to do so. City Council Chambers, City Hall, Portsmouth, New Hampshire, a proclamation: Whereas the city of Portsmouth has proudly served as the host community for the USS Hartford during its year-long $132 million modernization at the Portsmouth Naval Shipyard; and whereas the Los Angeles-class Fast Attack Nuclear Submarine commanded by Captain Ryan Brookhart will soon be departing from our shores upon completion of its depot modernization period; and whereas we have very much enjoyed having the Hartford's officers and crew in our area during the past year; and whereas volunteers from the USS Hartford have been active in our community despite a limited amount of free time; and whereas the USS Hartford also has participated in such local events as the annual holiday parade and the Memorial Day festivities in our city; and whereas although the USS Hartford's official home port is Groton, Connecticut, an area known and very fondly remembered by myself, we hope the officers and crew have felt welcome in their temporary home here. Now, therefore, I, Steve Marshant, mayor of the city of Portsmouth, do hereby join with all the members of the City Council and the citizens of Portsmouth in sending our thanks and very best wishes to the officers and crew of the USS Hartford, as we say goodbye and Godspeed as they prepare to leave the seacoast area for new deployments in defense of our nation, given with my hand and the seal of the city of Portsmouth on the 16th day of July 2007.
Thank you very much. Captain and chief, if you could please come forward, we have a few items for you. There's the proclamation. There you go, Captain. There you go, chief. These are some premiums from the city of Portsmouth. Enjoy. And if either or both of you would like to briefly address us, we'd certainly welcome you to take the podium.
City Council and members of the Portsmouth community and really the entire seacoast area, it's really with mixed feelings that we're leaving. As sailors, we're all looking forward to getting back to sea, but certainly the hospitality and kindness that we've experienced here in the seacoast area is beyond compare of what we've experienced around in our many years in the service, to some of us. So we're certainly going to miss the opportunities that we've had here to participate in your community and thank you for welcoming us as really part of your own, and we really appreciate that. I, too, have a few things.
I've got a picture for, let's see, Assistant Mayor, if you could pass that along to the mayor, and I think I've got one for just about everybody here. Pat Rimacrulli has been our very active liaison. I don't see her this evening, but we have that for her.
We thank you. We'll make sure that these get passed to the right people.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Captain, and thank you for being such a positive influence on our city.
For the city, a plaque with the seal of the Hartford on it, from the officer and crew of the USS Hartford, SS 768.
Thank you very much, Captain.
Thank you.
Hi, Your Honor.
Your Honor.
Councilor Whitehouse.
I'd like to personally thank the commander for setting up a tour for the mayor and myself the Fourth of July morning, and also thank the COB for what he did in making the arrangements. It was an interesting tour. I bought a new boat, ready to go, to sea, and also I want to thank the culinary arts chief for setting up such an elegant breakfast in the wardroom. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you once again. At this time, we'd like to recognize David Engel for a presentation regarding the Save the Old State House Committee.
Thank you, Assistant Mayor, members of the council. We are here because we are in desperate need of your help. I have several members of our committees here with me tonight, and some of you may know about us and some of you may not know about us. You do have a printout, which was in your materials for your meeting tonight. I'm not going to go through it all, except I will say that Mayor Sorrell appointed the Blue Ribbon Committee seven years ago, and since that time, we have had over 70 meetings with regard to trying to get the original State House reconstructed in the city of Portsmouth and have the funds raised to build it and to endow it as a meeting place and a visitor's center for the city, which I'm sure all of you realize the city is in desperate need of. And this, of course, is our first presentation here, talking about the State House Committee. And if I may, now I'd like to turn to the second slide, which, of course, is a picture of the model of the State House, which all of you must be familiar with because you pass it every time you have a city council meeting, and we consider that a very good project that we were able to obtain for the city and gives the city an idea as to what the State House would look like if, in fact, we can get it constructed. Then, as most of you probably know, we were able to get, thanks to a great measure, help from the city, its city staff itself, the bronze plaque, which now sits out at Market Square, which indicates when it was built and where it was located. And for those of you who may not know, I'm happy to say that in this month, we're going to get another project accomplished, and that is, the Department of Public Works is going to put four granite markers in Market Street to show the, no, not Market Street, excuse me, Congress Street, to show where the location of the State House really was in the beginning. And we were able to do that because there are two structures that were there then, so we were able to get the actual location very close to what it's going to be, and I've been told by the city, by Mr. Bahenko, that, in fact, they are planning to do that this month. So that's some of the background. Now, the purpose for being here tonight is this: Some, if not all of you, know that the committee was successful in getting a $250,000 grant from the federal government to investigate the place to put the State House and to look to uses that it could be put for. The funds, unfortunately, could not go to the State House Committee or to the City Council for handling. The point that we're making tonight is that we are very disappointed that we've heard nothing from the Division of Historic Resources with regard to that sum of money, which we were instrumental in getting, and we're almost halfway through the two years. It has to be all spent by October of 2008. We, as a Blue Ribbon Committee, don't have much clout. It is our feeling that we need your support to send to the Division of Historic Resources saying that the city of Portsmouth wants to have the reconstruction of the State House here in Portsmouth, where government began for this colony and ultimately the state of New Hampshire. As a result, we are asking you, if you would, and you've got a copy of the letter that we proposed be sent to Mr. McConaughey, and I assume that you, do you all have a copy of this letter?
I believe we do.
All right. We beseech you for the strength and the clout which we need, because we are otherwise at a dead end. We cannot go further without the city's endorsement, because we are, you know, who the heck, who the heck are you? You know, you're one of many, many committees of many, many cities, and so we need the background of the city itself so that this letter can go to Mr. McConaughey, and so hopefully, they will come down here and give us some sessions. They claimed to me personally in February that they were going to have a number of work sessions in the various communities in the seacoast area to see where would the best place be and where the most desirable place would be, and I don't know about you, but I don't want it to be in Exeter. Exeter was not the provincial capital, Portsmouth was, and so we are asking you, as I've already said, to consider and hopefully endorse the signing of this letter to be sent by the city to Mr. McConaughey, in the hopes that perhaps, with the blessing of the City Council, the project can at least get into the phase of investigation, which is what the $250,000 was for, which Senator Gregg was able to get for us. I would be glad to answer any questions you may have. As I say, we have been working on this now for seven years, had over 70 meetings, and I think you can tell from the accomplishments we've had made, small as they may be, to the construction of the original State House in the city, nevertheless, it's progress. You'd be surprised how many people did not know that the original State House was here and that one-third of it, one-third of it is still in the state warehouse, not warehouse, but a tractor, a trailer, pending reconstruction. And so we ask you to consider this, and we would like to have you know, by the way, that we are continuing to go to various schools, thanks to Ann. She's been taking the State House model around to all the schoolchildren, was it fourth grade? Fourth graders. So the fourth graders, over the last six years anyway, have found out about what government was in New Hampshire as a colony and the fact that New Hampshire had the Constitution to govern itself before the Declaration of Independence, which I think is quite something. So, as I say, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them, otherwise I will sit down and hope that you will take seriously what we request and act accordingly and sign this letter and send it off to Mr. McConaughey.
Thank you, Mr. Engel. Any questions for Mr. Engel at this time? Council Dwyer.
I've seen a number of requests from the group in Concord for input, from various groups and citizens, and, you know, as a member of different preservation things that I'm a part of, I've seen a lot of publicity that they've put out seeking proposals for ideas for their work, and so I'm a little surprised to hear you say that they haven't entertained ideas. I'm wondering if our committee has put forth a plan to them for particular uses or if you've sent in a proposal.
I don't remember, and please forgive me, whether you were on the council when Jim Garvin and I made the first presentation. Jim Garvin is the historicist, is the New Hampshire historian in that division, and he's worked very hard, but he can only spread himself so thin. And we have asked, in writing, for a report as to what's going on, and we've got a very oblique answer: Well, we're working on it, and we hope to get going. And that was in March.
But I've attended even here in Portsmouth, a presentation by Jim Garvin in March that, in fact, presented information and asked for input, so I'm confused about whether our committee, whether the Blue Ribbon Committee, has put forth its proposal to the State Committee. That's really all I'm asking.
Okay, well...
But I've attended even here in Portsmouth, a presentation by Jim Garvin in March, that in fact presented information and asked for input. So I'm confused about whether our committee, whether the Blue Ribbon Committee, has put forth its proposal to the State Committee. That's really all I'm asking.
Okay, well, in answer to your question, over several years, we've been doing that. We've been in touch with the State Committee, and we've talked about sites, and we've talked about traffic, and we've talked about uses, but it's not -- there's no cohesiveness, and they seem to listen to us, and that's all. They don't take any real steps, and that's why we feel it's imperative, if we're going to get anywhere with that State Department, that we have your endorsement and support so that it's not just a Blue Ribbon Committee of volunteers, it's the City Council who cares about this and wants to be considered as a place to put it.
So I just, this final, there isn't, on paper, from our committee, a plan that has gone forth. Is that correct?
Yeah, several.
There are written plans from our committee to -- for this, under this planning grant.
Now, when you say plans, are you talking about places to put it?
Whatever.
Are you talking about general information?
Oh, not general information, but it's because I -- my understanding of the various requests that I've read from the Planning Committee at the state is that they're asking for specific proposals from people for what to do. And so whether our committee has put forth a proposal, I guess, is the --
Not since the grant was submitted.
Yeah, that's what --
And the reason is because Mr. McConaughey, McConaughey, said that they were going to contact our committee and probably the city council to have work sessions in this city.
Got it.
And we've been waiting, and we've been asking, and we've been waiting, and we've been asking. And that's why we're here tonight, because without your punch, if you will, we're just spinning our wheels in the mud. So that's why we need your support, so that we can know, and they know, that there's the backing of the city, and when are you going to have these work sessions in the city to review sites, feasibility, uses, et cetera? And I've had several letters with Mr. McConaughey. I've been in touch with Jim Garvin. As an aside, Jim Garvin and I have been trying to get this going for over fifteen years, the two of us. And Mayor Sorrell didn't even know that the one-third of the State House was still intact and had been put at Strawberry Bank, and she became very interested in the project. And from there, thank goodness for Mayor Sorrell, we have gotten to the point we have, which is, I'm not trying to say we have any progress, because we have, but we need your clout.
Counselor Dwyer, or anyone else, if you have further questions, we appreciate, Mr. Engel, your presentation and the hard work of the committee. We're going to address this later on, under the agenda item, under Counselor Grasso's name, and perhaps it might even get moved up. But at this point, if you have nothing further, David, we're going to move on to the earlier part of the meeting, and then we'll be back to you, if you'd be kind enough to hang on.
Do you want me to stay for when you consider the matter?
If you would be so kind, I expect that we'll move it along earlier rather than --
That's fine. I'd be glad to. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. At this time, I entertain a motion to accept the minutes of June 25, 2007.
So move, Your Honor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next on the agenda is the public comment session, and I see a number of you out there are probably veterans to this, but once again, I'll review the procedure for you so that you know and understand. There are fourteen speakers this evening. A number of them, I notice, are speaking on one particular issue. Everyone is certainly welcome to speak, and you have three minutes to speak. At the end of, with thirty seconds to go, you will see a sign held up by Attorney Sullivan, which will indicate that you have thirty seconds left. After that, he will hold up a "Thank You" sign in red, which means that your time is up. While, again, we certainly want everyone to speak who wishes to, it is certainly an acceptable and appreciated practice for those of you who want to combine your efforts and rally behind one speaker. That's certainly welcome and acceptable as well. And with that, we'd ask you to step forward, identify yourself, and give your address, and then please make your comments. So first on the list is Harold Ecker. Regarding city business.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This jacket that I wear, for quite a long while, I've been very proud of it. But there was a while ago that I was very much ashamed to wear this jacket, because it says "Ecker" on it, and I'm Harold Ecker, and my son, young son, is Harold Joe Ecker. I'm a disciplined, organized person. I've worked hard. Seventy years old. I pay my taxes. I've earned my money to pay my taxes for one Public Works Department, one School Department, one Rec Department, one Fire Department, one Library, one City Hall. But I don't want to pay for two police departments. And it seems like we've got one police department up here, one down here, one here, one here. I would not want to be a young man coming into this city to be a policeman nowadays, not at all, because when you come in, you're supposed to make years, do your work, be evaluated, make rank, make grade, be promoted, and make money. And it seems like that's not happening in this city. It seems like there's a good old boy network in this city that's promoting those that they want to promote and not promote those that should be promoted. And it's amazing how a police person goes to represent this fine city of ours, and you people, and me, and everybody else that's watching tonight, and commits a sexual act. What are you going to do about it? Just going to sit there? I hope not. And Mr. Booze made him do it. Do it. And I don't know who paid for this, whether my tax dollar paid for it or was a special fund. But if it was a special fund, I would be ashamed if I was putting money into a special fund to send somebody to someplace to represent and honor people of this city. I would like to also know, when you start doing your investigating, if you're doing the investigating, if he was behind the Hebert affair, the restaurant affair. I used to see one, two, three, four, one, two, three police cars parked behind Hebert's every day. I do business at that bank. That's one of the banks I do business at. Since that affair, there's never been a police car there. Never. Never seen one there. Also, Butch Reese's in here tonight. I'm curious if this same person was behind the Butch Reese affair. I believe he was. I've known Butch since he was a young boy. Very nice, fine man. Not a liar, not a cheat, not a thief. No, nice person. My son was pulled out of his home a long while ago, pulled out of his home by seven police officers, thrown to the ground, and beaten up. And he was accused of sexual assault. I'm going to keep on going tonight, Robert.
Thirty seconds.
Okay. The police investigation did not talk to me. They did not talk to my wife. They did not talk to my other son. They did not talk to the young people that live on my property. They did not talk to my daughter across the street. They did not talk to my sister, who's just retired just a few years ago from the Department of Justice, from Washington, DC, and the FBI. Never talked to any of us. Never. Never at all. My son had to hire his own investigators to take care of everything. The state of New Hampshire dropped all charges against him, and he's spent a good deal of money. My wife cried herself to sleep night after night on this, and so did I, and so did my son. And I was ashamed to go out and meet people and do my business that I do. You people better do something about this.
Mr. Ecker, I'm going to have to ask you to terminate your remarks at this time.
I've talked to Bob Sullivan some time ago. Bob, I told you what I was going to do. Tell him how much I'm going to sue for. Do you remember?
I've had a number of discussions --
$100 million is what I'm going to sue for. I've already placed $5 million in a bank account to start the suit. I would suggest that we come to some kind of a compromise on this.
Mr. Ecker, you're out of order. I'm going to have to request that you leave the podium at this time. Next, we have second speaker, Jack Blaylock, land conveyance between City and DeLorenzo. Mr. Blaylock.
Good evening, Assistant Mayor, councilors, city manager, city attorney. I live at 148 Brackett Road in Portsmouth. I own a property and a business on 10 Serries Street in Portsmouth, down at the waterfront known as the Old Ferry Landing. And I wanted to speak tonight about the land conveyance between the city of Portsmouth and DeLorenzo Real Estate, LLC, in a positive way. I, because I've been running the Ferry Landing since I started with my father back in 1975, and that area is obviously very important to me, and I've seen it change over the years, mostly for the good. But what I think this would do, you know, we have a very congested area down there. We have a surface that isn't as pleasing as it probably could be. We have a lot of crushed stone and different surfaces. And by looking at what I think the city has in mind for kind of opening it up a bit, making it more inviting, giving us a little bit of, eliminating some of the congestion, as you walk down Serries Street and you face the waterfront, it would provide, I think, a beautiful view of the Piscatacua River, the tugboats, some river traffic, whereas now, you know, it's somewhat obstructed. And it would, I think it would accomplish this without disrupting too much of what the businesses are obviously doing business for down there. And it seems to be a cooperative effort where we can keep the vitality, the successful businesses we have down there, which is actually, which has brought the people down, and create, you know, an inviting, pleasant atmosphere that visitors, locals, anybody can come down and enjoy and just see that excellent waterfront. But I do think that this land conveyance is a positive step in that direction and will help us create, you know, a more pleasant area. Thank you.
Mr. Blaylock, did you give your address for the record?
My address, yes. 148 Brackett Road.
Thank you very much. Next, third speaker, Eric Spear, and if you would please come forward and, I guess, speak upon the middle school.
Good evening. Eric Spear, 49, Mount Vernon Street. I've been watching the middle school process for four long years, going to every meeting, reading every document, and talking with countless people. So you can imagine, I was so excited to see last week the school board vote nine to nothing in favor of renovating the Parrott Avenue school. I'm hoping tonight that the city council will send a strong message of support by voting eight to zero to begin the tangible process of renovation. Obviously, there are many people here who have concerns. Perhaps I am naively optimistic. However, I think we can all benefit from a little education on the process. Here are some questions people are asking me, and so I'm asking you, in the hope that we can get some answers tonight. That's why I handed all this stuff out, so you can not have to write down all my questions. Why is another feasibility study needed? What is the timeline for this new study? Will we form a joint building committee after the study is incomplete? How can we be assured that the new school will incorporate Portsmouth Master Plan principles like sustainability and walkability? And finally, another item that came out of the study circles, what steps can we take to forever preserve the Jones Avenue site from development? It's taken a few years, but I'm now confident that the public, the school board, and the city council are all on the same page. We know that the middle school students deserve better, and we now know that we're going to renovate the Parrott Avenue building. It seems to me that a little clarity here would be helpful for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, our fourth speaker this evening, also on the middle school, Rick Chellman.
Good evening. My name's Rick Chellman, 430 Richards Avenue. One of the items on your agenda is a letter from the school board regarding the middle school and advancing the process. I'd like to suggest and propose that the council consider engaging a top-tier architectural firm to work with the school board and work with the city to actually get this process going, and not think of it as a feasibility analysis and then a design process, but to commence the design process itself. And in the course of doing that, the feasibility of the Parrott Avenue site would be analyzed, again, by a top firm. And I think that a committee, and I'm volunteering my time to assist with this, I've hired a lot of architects in my career, I think a committee comprised of perhaps a couple of councilors, a school board member, city employees, myself, could do this and begin a process that would ensure a really good design firm. And I think we need to get this right. It's a critical location. It's a very important public building, and I care very much about good design.
Thank you, Mr. Chellman. And did you state your address for the record?
I think I did. 430 Richards Avenue.
Very good, and I'll, I thank you very much, and we'll ask for the next speaker to come forward. David Foreman, and if you would be kind enough to state your address, and I promise I'll listen to make sure I remember that you did so.
My name is David Foreman. Address is 579 Sagamore Avenue in Portsmouth. My primary interest is to question why the school committee is even considering as a hedge our second site the use of the unbelievable, beautiful piece of land at the end of Jones Avenue on the Sagamore River, when it's in direct violation of many of the covenants of the city of Portsmouth Master Plan, which was approved in 2005. This Master Plan was a result of twenty-six study circles of eight to twelve citizens meeting with many, if not all, of the city's various departments. It was, and still is, a serious measure of what the city's, city of Portsmouth goals are. So what does the Master Plan say? Goal NR-1: Direct new growth to areas that are already developed and where adequate infrastructure for growth is in place. Goal LU6: Encourage development that supports the revitalization of community centers and neighborhoods that reuses and rehabilitates existing infrastructures where appropriate rather than requiring new infrastructures. So I ask, what site satisfies these goals? And what site makes a mockery of these goals? Goal NR1-1R: Create an open space that prioritizes, I'm sorry, create an open space plan that prioritizes parcels for acquisition and preservation. Assess the most appropriate uses for city-owned parcels and explore greenway linkages that present opportunities between these parcels. Why, only today, in a Portsmouth Herald, Attorney, City Attorney Sullivan, speaking on a quarter-acre rendition to the Mill Pond Way, said, and I quote, "The city is always eager to accept..." dot-dot-dot "property, especially what it means protecting the waterfront from further development." He went on to say, I believe quoting Mark Twain, "They're not making any more of this land. The Sagamore site is such a land, and it's ours. Can we ever replace it if we build on this land?" This goal, this goal also, that is, the NR1-dot-1R, says to acquire open parcels, and that what the city of Portsmouth is doing. That is, they are setting money aside to purchase such land. I think they have $100,000 now in reserve. But I have to ask, does this make sense? Buy open land when we have it already. What will it cost the city to replace that land for future generations if we build on this land? This land is a nature preserve and a greenway corridor. It is in existence today. Does anyone seriously think that this land, as an integrated piece of this greenway, can ever be replaced if it's lost? I do not understand how the school committee can even consider a site that violates so many of the cherished objectives of the Master Plan. Their time would be better spent in making the Parrott Ave site work and complying with the Master Plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chellman. Next, I'm sorry, Mr. Foreman. Next is speaker number six, Rebecca Emerson, regarding the middle school.
Hello. My name is Rebecca Emerson, and I live at 34 Woodbury Ave. As a mother, I am, graduate of the Portsmouth school system, and a taxpayer, I am asking that you reject the school board's letter, which includes a request to fund a second feasibility study of the Parrott Avenue site. A feasibility study has already been done by Team Design, and the Parrott Ave site is not only viable, but it has been endorsed by Edward Murdo of the New Hampshire State Department of Education as being able to meet all the state requirements for a middle school. It is fiscally irresponsible to ask the taxpayers to pay for something we already have. The letter from the board requests funding for not just a study, but has put constraints on it, such as the educational narrative. Many of you have probably not had time to read the entire narrative. In fact, some school board members who've actually voted for this request haven't read it, another indication of fiscal irresponsibility. Page one of the educational narrative does indeed deal with some general educational ideas. However, the following fifty-nine pages of the narrative were written by Team Design and have nothing to do with education. It is a list of construction details that Team Design included in their feasibility study. By requiring any new firm to adhere to Team Design's educational narrative, guess what? You're going to get something that's essentially Team Design's design. The school board request does not allow for anyone to create or develop any new concepts or solutions. Again, I ask the city council not to endorse the school board's request. It is simply not a wise use of taxpayer money. According to one school board member, the board wants a Parrott Ave school for a student population of roughly 600 children. According to the school board's own study, which is quoted in the Master Plan's existing conditions section, the current building has a capacity of over 700 students. It doesn't seem reasonable that any renovation for fewer students would need a significantly larger -- larger footprint. But we will never know if a school can be built on the current site without encroaching on city-owned Pierce land, as was done for the library, unless a design firm is allowed to work without those constraints. However, we cannot hire a design firm until we have a site. The next step is up to the school board. As Kent LaPage would say, it is time for the school board to use their decision-making skills and decide unequivocally on Parrot Avenue. As a taxpayer, again, I request that the city council not allocate any more funds to this project until the school board names Parrot Ave. as its final choice in a site. Otherwise, we could be throwing money at this forever without any benefit. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Emerson.
Your Honor, I really need to say something at this time, if I might, for personal privilege.
The chair recognizes Counsel Grasso.
Thank you. Ms. Emerson, the library was built on city-owned land. The library was not built on land owned by anyone else, including the Pierce family. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Emerson. At this point, I'd like to recognize the seventh speaker, Tony Coviallo, regarding the middle school.
Good evening. Tony Coviallo, 341 Dennett Street. You got it? Good. I don't wish to repeat what has already been said tonight, and maybe said many times after me. However, any repetition only highlights the importance of the issue in so many people's minds. I think we have a problem with naming things in our community. While driving down Daniel Street, the name will change two times without changing your steering wheel direction. We have the Portsmouth Shipyard in Kittery, and one will not find strawberries at Strawberry Bank, a personal disappointment to me during a fourth grade field trip. Lately, we have heard much to do about an educational narrative for the design of a new or renovated middle school. Upon looking at the document, you will see it has little to do with what you would think it is from its title. It's really a wish list of classroom sizes and amenities desired for the future middle school. This was a large source of confusion during the portion of list and study circles. It raised much criticism in the school department because people expected it to explain such things as what courses are being taught, what books they'll use, or what they would cover in the classrooms, not things like we want automatic flush toilets. I think the document was necessary. I'm not faulting the document. The document is definitely necessary for the construction of a new school. I just think it was poorly named. Now we have a new naming problem with the feasibility study for Parrot Avenue. We already had a feasibility study done by Team Design, so again, we have confusion. We know it works from the Team Design study. We also know that there are other options to make it work better, for example, expanding onto Rogers Street, using the senior center, or assigning priority of the municipal parking lot on Parrot and Junkins for school parking. So really, this is a refinement of the feasibility study, or an alternative analysis. And it's not answering the question "if," it's answering the question "how." And as long as that's the goal, then I'm in favor of it. Please, as a city council, tell the school board that you are only in favor of funding the "how" study, and don't waste time or money on an "if" study. Also, please, upon hiring a qualified architect, don't box them into constraints. They're experts, let them do their jobs. Tell them that anything from the library to the senior center is in play. Give them the Master Plan to go by, and tell them to be creative, and most importantly, tell them to challenge all assumptions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, eighth speaker, Jerry Stowe, regarding the middle school.
Good evening. Jerry Stowe, 579 Sagamore Avenue, Assistant Mayor, Members of the Council, City Manager. I'm not going to reiterate everything that's been said before me. Obviously, I agree with it, or I wouldn't be standing here as endorsing the proposed site for the middle school. I would just ask that we reflect upon this as an opportunity where the school board, the city council, the citizens of this community can come together. We have a decision. The Parrot Avenue site will accommodate the new Portsmouth High School, and it's, as the previous speaker said, excuse me, middle school. As the previous speaker said, it's not a matter of "if," it's a matter of "how." And I think this is an excellent time for us to galvanize as a community. There are people with excellent ideas. Let's galvanize the ideas and the efforts and build a middle school that we can be proud of, and that the children for future generations will find, be proud of, and will meet all their educational requirements. And let's take Jones Avenue off the table. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stowe. Next, our ninth speaker of the evening, Carol Chelman, speaking regarding the middle
Hi. Hi, good evening. I'm Carol Chelman. I live at 430 Richards Avenue, and I'm an attorney, and I'm a mother, and I am also a taxpayer. And I would like to talk to you from all those different angles this evening. First of all, as a taxpayer, I am concerned with what I've read in the paper and what I've seen at school board meetings, and that is this belief that we need a feasibility study. I think it's a really slippery slope. It seems like, oh, what a simple thing, the school board is asking for a feasibility study. Why shouldn't they get it? Isn't that the way we do things? Well, I think maybe as we've learned from this middle school debate, you can't do things just the way we always did them. We have to think outside the box. And going to a feasibility study is not going to get us where we need to go. As has been pointed out, we already did one. If that's not reason enough, there is also the fact that when you do a feasibility study, you're essentially attracting the firms that are looking for work. And as we know, for instance, when you're looking for an attorney, you want a busy attorney. When you're looking for a doctor, you want a busy doctor. You don't want a doctor who's looking for work. We don't want an architect who's looking for work. I think that's a really important point that maybe the school board wasn't aware of. You know, it's not their thing to do, to build buildings, they're school board members, and this is creating certain challenges for them, as well as the city council. Having said that about the feasibility study, I want to just briefly make mention of certain things regarding the letter. I'm sure all of you have the letter, have read it, or are going to read it. The letter, I don't think, says what it was intended to say. If you read the first three sentences, you learn that the agreement to Parrot Avenue, support of Parrot Avenue, is conditional on you providing funds. So in other words, you say tomorrow, hey, we'll do funds, we'll, we'll give you funds. That means the school board agrees to Parrot Avenue. Now, if that's what they meant, that's one thing. But I don't believe that that is what they met, meant, and I think you, as a council, need to be very careful how you read this letter, very careful what you agree to, what you put your name next to, in terms of this letter. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, our tenth speaker for this evening, Heather Hurt, regarding the middle school.
Hello again. Heather Hurt, 69 Newcastle Avenue. I am a mother to a 15-month-old who's going to be going in the middle school, and I'm also on the steering committee of the Seacoast Mothers Association, which represents over 500 mothers in the seacoast. The letter from the school board before you tonight, in my opinion, completely misses the point by focusing on if we should renovate the Parrot Avenue Middle School, rather than how we should renovate the Parrot Avenue Middle School. After three years, two committees, 16 study circles, and one feasibility study, there is little doubt that the site is feasible. I urge you to not let the school board waste more valuable time, misuse taxpayer money, and disregard the will of the people. Our community begs our elected officials to quickly focus on how to renovate the Parrot Avenue Middle School, not if we should renovate it. Please tell the school board this evening that the city council will only accept this letter if it actually reflects the will of the people. And the language here is really, really important. The letter should read, "The school board is recommending the Parrot Avenue site and requesting funding to initiate the design process." Nothing more, nothing less. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, our eleventh speaker would be Alan Nelson, regarding Portsmouth Middle School and the Pierce Trust.
Good evening. Alan Nelson, 225 Marcy Street, resident and taxpayer. I understand from the Portsmouth Herald that there's a request before you to change the line of questioning concerning the renovation of the Portsmouth Middle School. In reading the proposal, I'm not certain if this is merely semantics or an attempt to absolutely commit our city to a renovated Portsmouth Middle School, the scope and size specified by our school board, at any cost, and I underline any cost. My problem with this is the scope. We want to have a lot of things at the site. There's no doubt in my mind that we can accommodate the middle school here, but at what cost? And what are we willing to trade off to get there? And that, that is a real concern of mine, and I think in the process, if I understand where we're at right now, we're sharpening pencils, and we're, we still have an option for the other site. Doesn't seem likely, maybe that's not where we want to go, but it is an option, because we do indeed have finite resources. We obviously do not have infinite resources in both land and money, and it would be irresponsible to remove important options available to us at this stage of development. In view of the fact council has been unable to further address removal of the Pierce Trust property in any way concerning this project, such action would certainly seem inconsistent and possibly biased. Consider, please, the Pierce Trust land was respected by the city in the siting of the new library, and it does possess a clear deed restriction, which are not arbitrary. If you change the line of questioning as proposed, please do the right thing and include an exclusion for the Pierce Trust property. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nelson. And now, I want to make sure from the writing that I get the person's name correct. Is it, is it Lalita or Elita Morgan? If you'd be kind enough to come forward regarding the middle school. What did I get?
Good evening. My name is Zalita Figueriad Morgan, and I live at 39 Richards Avenue, and I'd like to address this council tonight regarding the middle school. Please, no other feasibility study. Let's move into design phase. The school board should recommend a site without stipulating conditions. Please remember that good education has been taking place at Parrot Avenue, regardless, and with all its limitations, which attest for the talent and thoughtfulness and resourcefulness of our teachers, educators, and community at large. Good education has been taking place there, without 200 parking spaces. Good education has been taking place there, without a large auditorium, which we have already in our high school. We should be looking at our resources and manage our resources very carefully and responsibly. Duplication of resources is wasteful. The reports coming out of the study circles provided the school board, this council, and our residents with creative ways of handling some of the challenges for this project. Good education can certainly continue to take place at the Parrot Avenue site without wasteful actions or investments, but with creative, thoughtful, and purposeful decisions. And tonight, you, you can make a thoughtful and purposeful decision by declining to sponsor another feasibility study to a site that has already been presented as feasible, the Parrot Avenue site. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you, Ms. Barton. We have one more speaker, our fourteenth speaker, and that would be Ken White, regarding USO. I'm sorry, I missed, I missed Kirsten Barton, but we're going to get back to you. Since you're up there, Ken, why don't you go ahead? Why don't you go ahead?
Thank you. I'm Ken White with Waddell &amp; Reed. We're located at 18 Congress Street, and I just wanted to thank the council for taking our request for the permission to have our specially-equipped truck parked at the parking lot, that I spoke to City Manager John Behan-Gobert. And I did not have with me at that time, John, when I brought the letter over, the care package that Waddell &amp; Reed is sponsoring for the USO, so I thought I would share that with the city council, and the donation letters that go along with it. These care packages for the troops overseas represent about a $75 value, and so Waddell &amp; Reed is picking up the difference in the donation, which is $25, to the citizens who come on board our specially-prepared truck. So we're doing that in conjunction with the 70th anniversary of the company, and we thought it would be a good way to celebrate the company as well as doing something meaningful at the same time. So I'll bring this to the council. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And finally, I would like to recognize our last speaker for this evening, Kirsten Barton, regarding the middle school.
Hi, good evening. My name's Kirsten Barton. I'm at 300 Court Street, and I did have a few comments prepared, but I think what I'd like to echo is the comments that were put before you by Mr. Chelman, to involve building professionals and possibly form a committee that would be able to be involved in the process, and also a citywide committee that involves people from the council, the board, and people within the community, to have clearer communication of what's going on within the project. And I, the last point I have is truly the renovation of the middle school should be considered a community effort, and I would request that the RFP process, or requesting for designs, should be kept as open and transparent to the community as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. That closes the public comment, and at this time, we'll go forward with the next agenda item.
Your Honor?
Yes, Counsel Grasso.
I'd like to ask the council's approval to suspend the rules in order to take up item, let's see, 11...
It would be 11D.
11D, concerning the State House, so that, the old State House, so the people who are waiting here.
I'll second it. Thank you.
We have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's a vote.
Your Honor, I'd like to move that we endorse the efforts of the State, Save the Old State House Committee, to find a location in Portsmouth for the reconstruction and renovation of the old State House.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor. We have a second from Counselor Penalakas. Discussion. Counselor Dwyer.
I was actually, and I want to put forth a suggestion of tabling this discussion for a couple reasons. One, we do, we as a council have scheduled a work session on August 6th with, to deal with the response to the RFP that the city put out, with a proposal before us for a particular use of the State House. So it, it seems to me that until, since we already have scheduled that work session, that it wouldn't be appropriate for us to be endorsing another use until we've gone through that. And the particular piece of this petition that is troubling to me, given, is the word "reconstructed," because I have talked to James Garvin also about this, and I understand that in no way does what we have left of the State House qualify for reconstruction in any federal funds. There's not enough left to reconstruct the State House, and in fact, it would be a disnification of the State House, given the small proportion that is left. So given the standards that the federal government has in place, we wouldn't be able to actually reconstruct. So I would, the history side of me, preservation side, would have trouble endorsing this petition as it stands, but the procedural side gives me trouble endorsing something where we have already a work session scheduled with an open response to an RFP that we haven't responded to yet. I don't see how we could move in one direction. So I would table it so that we can have the work session and then have the discussion.
We have a motion to table on the floor. Do we have a second? Second. Further discussion. Counselor Penalakas.
Yes, it's from my understanding that this work session...
This is on the tabling motion. This is not on the merits of the actual request.
Well, this work session that we... Well, this work session that we are having is to have with the people interested in this, in the library, correct? And am I not correct in saying that the State House Committee did not want to be involved in that?
I don't know what the State House Committee said that it wanted to be involved in. The proposal that we received, that we all read, proposes a particular use for elements of the State House, not a reconstructed State House. And that's, we scheduled a work session so that we could have that discussion. We haven't had that yet.
But I understood that this committee did not want to engage in that, in what I've read.
I will just intervene to say here that we're speaking as to the, that may be a question that is properly directed to people present from the committee, but at this point in time, Councilor Dwyer has represented what she understands to be the offering of the historic committee with regard to the old library, and that they've mentioned elements of the State House. So that's, whether or not they agree or disagree, we can get to. Councilor Whitehouse.
Speaking on the tabling motion, I'm asking my fellow councillors, please, don't, don't vote for the tabling motion. I've been a member of this subcommittee, searching for a location, doing research on the value of the old State House, and I say to you that this letter must be passed on to Mr. McConaughey immediately to let him know our feelings. So please, don't, don't table this issue, discuss it fully on its merits.
Thank you, Councilor Whitehouse. Councilor Hines.
Thank you, Your Honor. My question is, since this council has made a motion to table seconded, what's the point of discussing this issue any further without taking a vote of the council to see whether or not they want to table this issue?
Councilor Hines has effectively called the question, unless there's any particular need for discussion. Councilor Smith.
Thank you, Your Honor. The reason I'm supporting the tabling motion is not only for the merits that have already been brought up about another group wishing to have parts of this, but I guess I don't understand why, they say they want to have the work sessions down here, but there isn't a document that's been brought forth of exactly what the plans are supposed to be as of yet. I haven't seen any, and I'd like to see those documents first before I would be endorsing this letter to be able to hold the work sessions. So my reason for going along with this is to hopefully give the committee to our next month's meeting to be able to come back and give me the documents of exactly what it is they want the state to do. We don't have, I haven't seen anything other than this letter saying we want to have discussions.
Councilor Grasso.
Yes, thank you. In regards to the tabling motion, I would ask that you vote against it because the group that we're going to be having a work session with also is talking about the State House in Portsmouth. That's what we're doing. Reconstruction did not necess, did not mean what's in the trailer. It means to build a symbol of the State House as we have it here. And the reason that we haven't been able to communicate, we have written, as Mr. Ingalls has said, letters to the department, and we have gotten back nothing that gives us any information. The grant that we were instrumental in getting completes its first year in October. It has one more year to go. We don't know what their budget is. We don't know what they're spending their money on. We don't know if they're duplicating things that we have already done. We get no communication except to tell, to brush us off very quickly. And so I would urge that we not table this, that we vote to send this letter, and that this would not prevent anything that they, we might take up at the work session.
Thank you, Councilor Grasso. Again, I'd ask you to keep your remarks directed to the tabling motion. Councilor Hines.
I would ask if perhaps we ought to look at Robert's Rules of Order, and since this council has a motion and a second to table the issue, why are we discussing it without holding a vote to see if the majority of this council wants to further discuss it or to just table it?
Thank you, Councilor Hines. He renews his point of order. I do think it's fair to say that while we try to procedurally separate the two, there is overlap between the two. It would probably not be in everyone's best interest to continue with discussion until we vote. And with that, we have a motion to call the question, so can we go forward with a vote?
Roll call.
Councilor Grasso?
No.
Councilor Dwyer?
Yes.
Councilor Reynolds?
Yes.
Councilor Panalakis?
No.
Councilor Whitehouse?
No.
Councilor Smith?
Yes.
Councilor Hines?
Yes.
Assistant Mayor Farini?
Yes.
The motion to table passes five to three. Next on our agenda this evening, we have consideration of resolutions and ordinances under Roman numeral seven A of the agenda, and I will briefly get to the first reading of the resolution authorizing a bond issue of up to $3,650,000 for the construction of a new fire station to replace Fire Station Two, and I will briefly, as I believe is our practice, read. Yes.
We skipped approval of grants and donations.
Okay, we have, that's true. So we have Roman numeral seven, approvals of, approval of grants and donations, acceptance of a donation to the new library building fund by Scott A. and Valencia Wilson in the amount of $1,100 for the Marie Wilson Memorial Plaque. This is the second payment of the pledge for the memorial plaque. The chair will entertain a motion.
Your Honor?
Councilor Whitehouse.
Your Honor, I move to approve and accept the donation to the New Hampshire Library, to the new library building fund as listed.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now we'll do the consideration of resolutions and ordinances. And again, before us is the ordinance for the fire station. I'm going to read it, the resolution that we will be passing if we vote in favor of it. It is as follows. That 3 million, it be resolved that $3,650,000 is appropriated for the construction of a new fire station to replace Fire Station Two. That to meet this appropriation, the city treasurer, with the approval of the city manager, is authorized to borrow up to $3,650,000 under the Municipal Finance Act. That the expected useful life of the project is determined to be at least 20 years, and that this resolution shall take place or shall take effect upon its passage. That is the, that is the, that is the text of the resolution. Do I have a motion? Your Honor? Council Reynolds?
I'd like to make the motion, and then if I could, I'll speak to it a little bit.
Second.
Second, I assume. I move that the council pass first reading to authorize bonding in the amount of $3,650,000 for construction of a new fire station to replace Fire Station Two, and schedule a public hearing and adoption at the August 6th city council meeting.
Second.
Councilor Reynolds.
Thank you, Assistant Mayor. I'm pleased to make the motion in support of issuing a bond to replace Fire Station Two. It's obviously a project that we have in our capital improvement plan that's very much necessary, and which we've been working on with the Fire Station Committee for some time now. As we had a little bit of discussion at the last meeting, and there's been some coverage in the media since, there's been this discussion about, you know, whether 3.65 million is enough to do the job, and particularly, the point that I spoke to last meeting, it seems to be the contention being made that our city's desire to make the building a green building is the issue that's driving up the costs. And at that time, I raised my concern with that, with that framing of the issue, and I'm going to continue to do that. And actually, there's something under my name later in the meeting that will go to that. There's a Fire Station Committee meeting tomorrow, at which I'll talk about this. So I just wanted to bring that up, you know, for the record here in public. Again, I'm supportive of the new fire station and of our efforts, and we'll have more to say in the future about the particular figure.
Thank you, Councilor Reynolds. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I think it's appropriate to request a vote. I believe that it must be a roll call vote.
Councilor Grasso?
Yes.
Councilor Dwyer?
Yes.
Councilor Reynolds?
Yes.
Councilor Panalakis?
Yes.
Councilor Whitehouse?
Yes.
Councilor Smith?
Yes.
Councilor Hines?
Yes.
Assistant Mayor Farini?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Eight, nothing. It passes unanimously. Next, we move on to the consent agenda. We have three items on the consent agenda this evening, and once again, the rules are, if you would like to take one off for a purpose of further discussion, we'd be happy to do so. Seeing no one doing so, I will read the three items and then ask for a motion. We have an acceptance of a donation to the firefighter monument by Eugene and Diana Hershey in the amount of $25. We have an acceptance of a donation to the Coalition Legal Fund from the town of Carroll in the amount of $1,000. Finally, we have a letter from Janet Bourne of the Arthritis Foundation requesting permission to hold the annual Jingle Bell Run on Saturday, November 17th, 2007, at 10:00 a.m. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second, Your Honor? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we move on to presentation and consideration of written communications under Roman numeral 10. And first, we have a letter from Jill Harkness, Good Vibes, Life is Good Shop, requesting permission to hold a pumpkin festival in Prescott Park on Saturday, October 20, 2007.
Your Honor?
Councilor Whitehouse.
I move to the city manager with power also send a memo to the Prescott Park.
Perhaps we might do it the other way around, if I could kindly suggest that.
All right. I should know.
That's okay. Does the city manager care to speak to that?
Well, my suggestion, since if you read the letter, it's a first-time event, and so my suggestion would be to move it to the trustees of the trust for report back, because then we can understand some of their issues if they have any.
If Councilor Whitehouse would make a friendly...
That's right.
...change to his motion?
Just to comment further.
Do we have a second yet to Herald's?
Second.
Okay, Councilor Whitehouse.
Yeah, this, this event could attract thousands of people. Maybe not the first year, but other cities who have had it has, and continues it each year have attracted many, many people. So I think we better be very careful, you know?
Thank you, Councilor Whitehouse. Any further comments? Council Dwyer.
In the spirit of kind of sustainability, I would want the report back to include what will happen with all those pumpkins, and will they be used for animal food in some way? I think that would be an important part of knowing whether or not we should support it.
Thank you, Council Dwyer. Any further questions? With that, all in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have a letter from Ken White of Waddell &amp; Reed, from whom we heard earlier during the public comment session. Letters before you requesting permission to set up a specially-equipped Waddell &amp; Reed truck on Friday, August 10th, 2007, from 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. to participate in supplying USO care packages to United States troops overseas. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
How about a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's going to be referred to the city manager with power to execute that request. Next, we have a letter from Attorney Malcolm McNeil regarding a request for a municipal shoreland exemption, RSA 483B12 for property at 99 Bow Street. And at this point, would Attorney McNeil like to speak to this letter?
Your Honor, I will...
We will need a motion to suspend the rules.
I will be abstaining.
Councilor Grasso will be abstaining from the discussion, deliberation, and voting of this item.
Your Honor, I'll move to suspend the rules to allow Attorney McNeil to enlighten us a little bit on this.
And I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Attorney McNeil.
Thank you very much, Mr. Assistant Mayor, members of the council. My name is Malcolm McNeil. I'm the attorney for RRJ Limited Partnership Property, the martingale so-called, that many of you are familiar with along the Piscataqua Riverfront. We're here tonight, John and Butch Ritchie, who are the principals of that partnership. Larry Morris is here, who's a soil scientist, if there are any technical questions, and John Merkel, who is the architect of this project, is also here. And I'm going to ask Butch just to put some boards in front of me, although I think this property speaks for itself. Although you probably have not ever acted on this kind of a request before, I think it's a request that has been specifically designed by the state to work in urbanized areas to provide a remedy that permits development along riverfronts in a manner that is consistent from the perception of the state with the Shoreland Conservation Act. The Shoreland Protection Act would prohibit any building in this area for at least 50 feet back. That's a state statute. It's very important to note that this application, as is displayed in the materials that I have supplied to you, has received every approval of the city of Portsmouth. There is no ordinance of this community that would prohibit this use. It's been reviewed for nine months by the HDC, a number of months by the Planning Board, and also by the Conservation Commission. So in terms of it being permissible within the city, it clearly is and has been approved by every entity. So we are solely dealing with a state statute that affects this property. I think, therefore, that the two important pieces of paper in the materials that I supplied to you come from the state itself in terms of addressing this issue. And the first one is Exhibit 15 in your package from the Attorney General's office, which I requested just to assist you in evaluating whether this was a reasonable request. And I'd just like to read to you two sentences of that letter. It says, "The New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services, DES, has indicated that Section 483:12," which is what we're acting under, "is the appropriate exemption to request in a case such as this one. Section 483B:12 was developed to accommodate exactly the type of situation presented in the request from RRJ Properties." It goes on to say that "the area in question exhibits high current and historic building density, is in a commercial area, is supported by public utilities, and is governed by local zoning restrictions." Now, in addition, I requested and received today, and I'm going to ask Butch to pass it to you, a letter from the statewide administrator of the Shoreland Protection Bureau relative to the action under this request. And this letter is accompanied by a recognition that the author has reviewed all of the materials that you have with regard to this request, and has considered the property which she is familiar with, as well as the other materials and the statutory intent with regard to this statute and this exemption. I think the important component of her letter is the last paragraph that says this. "Given my knowledge of the statute and its application by NHDES, it is appropriate and acceptable to consider the application of the exemption to this property, and the exemption is clearly consistent with the intent of the statute." And furthermore, she makes reference to the Attorney General's letter, which she says, quote, "I agree with the letter of Attorney Brooks," which I just read to you dated June 13th, 2007, "that Section 483B was developed to accommodate exactly the type of situation in the request from RRJ Limited Properties." The criteria, and what we're asking you to do this evening, is this. The ultimate exemption is given by the director of the DES, but it has to generate from the local municipality. I used as a basis for this request a similar type of exemption that was done along the waterfront in Laconia, and I worked with Darlene Forst, who is the administrator who wrote the letter that I just wrote to you, about laying out, if you will, the criteria that are important with regard to your consideration. The first under the statute is the consideration of the current and past building density. All of you are familiar with the existing condition there, some very significant development. This is the last area really along the waterfront in that area that isn't developed. But we've also included in your packet some historical materials dating from the turn of the last century to give you a sense of the historic utilization of this for commercial and industrial purposes. But for a fire on either side of this building, we would anticipate that building still would be there. Secondly, this is intended to be for an urbanized area where there is commercial or industrial uses. Needless to say, all of you are aware of the intensity of the commercial activity in that area, and the historical documents speak to the industrial uses that previously were there. And so as such, I think there's clearly a record to support that criteria. The third criteria, once again, the concept of urbanized use as opposed to being at Lake Winnipesaukee or some pond or... or some pond or Oscepee Lake, et cetera. Urbanized characteristics relate to municipal or other public utilities. All of the public utilities necessary for this site exist. And more importantly, the Planning Board looked at them completely when this project was approved. So in terms of the availability and use of public utilities, they are clearly available. And it's evidenced by the Planning Board approval that's in your file. Then lastly, current municipal land use regulations, which affect the protected shorefront. For instance, if there was some municipal ordinance that prohibited this exemption or in some fashion crafted a resistance to this exemption, the state would wish to know that. Clearly, that's entirely to the contrary. If this case were to be solely decided on municipal regulations, the Richies would be able to build the building right now. So in terms of the historical use and the intent of the statute, the state representatives, the Attorney General's office, in my view, say it's appropriate. Given the fact that the procedure to go forward with this is a bit uncertain, I consulted with the state and I came up with a memorandum that I'm asking you to authorize the mayor to sign as part of the package that basically says that you've reviewed these materials, that you find that the current and past building density of the site supports highly urbanized activity, and that the RRJ proposal is consistent with the historical uses of the site, that you find that there has been intense commercial and industrial historic usage of this area, and that you find that the subject area is serviced by all necessary municipal and other public utilities, and the council further finds that current municipal land use regulations affecting the property have been thoroughly reviewed by all Portsmouth regulators, and the site fully complies with the land use regulations of the city. I wanted to say another thing. I noted both earlier tonight and later tonight that you're going to talk about the Riverwalk and the participation of property owners along the Riverwalk. I'm sure Mr. Bohanko and Mr. Sullivan would concur, as well as Cindy Hayden, that these particular applicants have clearly indicated a desire for their waterfront areas to work collaboratively with the city with regard to the Riverwalk. So this would not adversely affect that process. In my view, it would facilitate it. So if you have any questions with regard to any of the materials, I'd be happy to answer them. If you have any technical questions with regard to the Shoreland Conservation Act, I can address those, and Larry Morse can as well. And then if you have any concerns about the building, I will say that the building by the HDC was looked at front, back, high, low, sideways, every other way for nine months, very carefully. And thereafter, there were many concerns about the adaptability of this portion of town to this use by the Planning Board, all of which resulted in favorable reviews. We feel the enabling legislation exists for a purpose. We feel this will be in the best interests of the city. It will be a very desirable result because it's totally consistent with your master plan and all of your regulations. And we're asking you to endorse this exemption so we can pass it along to Commissioner Burek for his action.
Thank you, Attorney McNeil. Any questions for Attorney McNeil or Mr. Morse?
Assistant Mayor?
Counsel Panalakis?
I would ask this council authorize the mayor to request a municipal exemption to further authorize the mayor to execute the request, which is appended heretofu to the submission to the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services and Office of Planning.
I'll second that.
Speaking on the motion, Your Honor?
Counsel Whitehouse?
Yes. Would the Mick of the motion also add, after each wording of the mayor, insert the city manager? I think it's important.
I believe that the... Just defer to the city attorney on this as to what the appropriate wording is for compliance with the statute.
The statute actually reads that the governing body requests exemptions.
So that would be the mayor speaking on behalf of the council, I believe, Counsel Whitehouse. But well-taken point. Any further comment or discussion? We're ready for a vote, then?
Roll call, please.
Assistant Mayor?
Counsel Reynolds?
I can only speak for myself, but I think that the information that we've been presented with with regard to this project, the fact that it's been all the way through the city's land use boards and gotten all its approvals, and particularly the letter from state authorities stating essentially that this type of setting, urbanized setting, is exactly what this exemption process was designed for. You know, I'm persuaded that this is really an easy call for the city. And I just... I don't... I just wanted to say something to that effect so that we... Our citizens are assured that, you know, we're aware of the, you know, what potentially could be at stake here. We're not blithely accepting, you know, a developer's proposal for developing the last piece of waterfront along the city. This is... Project's been very carefully reviewed all along, and this type of exemption is exactly what the law envisions, and I'm prepared to support it.
Thank you, Counsel Reynolds. Any further comment from other counselors? Hearing none?
Roll call, please. Initiate, Your Honor.
Counsel Grasso?
Epstein.
Epstein. Counsel Dwyer?
Yes.
Counsel Reynolds?
Yes.
Counsel Panalakis?
Yes.
Counsel Whitehouse?
Yes.
Counsel Smith?
Yes.
Counsel Hines?
Yes.
Assistant Mayor Farini?
Yes. Thank you very much.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Next, we have a letter before us from John Tinios from Popovers on the Square for a sidewalk obstruction license for the placement of one A-frame sign in front of the establishment. Do I have a motion?
I'll move to the city manager with power.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Wait a minute, Your Honor. Your Honor?
Counsel Whitehouse, do you care to speak to the motion?
Yes, I do.
Please do so.
The A-frame sign, as indicated, is in front of the establishment. I think they've changed the location. They want it at the edge of where the tables and chairs are located, which is closer towards the sidewalk.
Right, that's in the picture, I think.
Yes, but the... Under D10D, it states, "A-frame in front of establishment", so.
Is it safe to say that included within the ambit of move to refer to city manager with power, there's sufficient clarification there for him to proceed? Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And I don't know if it matters, but I got the original in my packet. I don't know. Well, I have what looks like an original too, so I don't know. This is colored... We use the color copier. It's that fancy technology. Get you every time.
Next, Item E, request from Daniel Fenderson, Subway of the Subway Restaurant for sidewalk obstruction license for the placement of two tables and 12 chairs in front of that establishment. Do I have a motion?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Discussion? Counsel Smith?
Thank you. Just one note while the city manager is... If this goes forward, works with them to realize that the moving of the tables and so forth, as we have in other areas, will be strictly enforced on this area as well.
Yes. Thank you, Counsel Panalakis.
Yes, I wanted to know if this would affect the barn moral stage and whatnot there in any way.
Actually, it enhances it. And then if there's a special event, we'll be able to work with whoever's doing the special event.
Thank you.
Further discussion or inquiry for the city manager? If not, we'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that's another unanimous vote. Item F, request from Ariel Silanpa, Cristriel &amp; Co. Fine Jewelry, and I apologize if I did not get the name correct in terms of pronunciation, for sidewalk obstruction license for the placement of one A-frame sign in front of the establishment. Do I have a motion? Counselor Panalakis has made a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Counsel Smith has seconded. Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Should I have said the city manager with power?
Fine, I got it.
That's fine. That motion was for the deputy city clerk to the city manager with power. Item G, a letter from the Portsmouth School Board requesting an architectural feasibility study for the Parrot Avenue site. And the letter is brief, and I will take the liberty of reading it into the record. Dear Mayor Mashan and Portsmouth City Councilors, the Portsmouth School Board at its meeting of June 26, 2007, approved a motion to inform the city council that it is prepared to support the Parrot Avenue site if the city council will provide the necessary funds to have an architectural feasibility study to determine whether the Parrot Avenue site supports six... Supports grades six, seven, and eight, meets the educational narrative, provides for sufficient athletic fields, and addresses parking, parent drop-off, and bus safety. We look forward to working together to benefit our middle school students and the community. And it is signed by the school board members as well as the chair of the Newington School Board, Helen Malvini. That is what is before you. Do we have a motion?
I'd like to make the motion that we provide the necessary fund for an architectural feasibility study.
I'll second that.
We have a motion, and we have a second discussion. Counsel Whitehouse?
There's been considerable talk in reference to this letter. We had nine speakers speaking on the letter. Out of the nine, six talked about the issue of feasibility study. They talked about the educational narrative. Fifty-nine pages. I wonder how many has read there? Fifty-nine pages. I saw the report of the educational narrative. I read the front and back page. That's all I had time to read. I question whether we should be accepting this letter or not. I think it should be sent back and given a more directive on renovating the present middle school period. The people have spoken and to question whether to go to the right or left of this school for additional room space and space. I... I'm listening to the study circles, the report they gave to us. I went to the last school board meeting. There was considerable talk about this letter. And I'm not going to accept it in its present context, especially when it talks about another feasibility study. It talks about the educational narrative, and it talks about determining whether the Parrot Avenue site supports grades six, seven, and eight. It's not whether, in my opinion. It is definitely...
Counsel Whitehouse, go ahead. Anything further, Counsel Whitehouse? Okay, Counsel Whitehouse, I'm just going to ask you, so that we can be clear. You've spoken to the motion. One could interpret what you said as a motion, but I'm going to choose to characterize it as not being a motion to amend unless you so deem it.
I'd rather not. My track record of amending motions is not that good, Your Honor.
But that's okay.
Please don't make an issue out of it.
But you have kicked off conversations before, and we're okay.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the comment.
All right. Counsel Panalakis?
Yes, it's to my understanding, and they can correct me if I'm wrong. Everything I've heard from the study committees has said we need architects involved in this. This is what this is asking for. We've also been said that the narrative there... To my understanding, that this narrative was put together through teachers and people that will be involved with the school in how the rooms and the educational things will be put together. So I think we need to take these all into consideration. And if we're going to build something, we need an architect's feasibility study to say whether it's going to be able to be done. Since the study committees knocked team design at how bad they were with their feasibility, how could we ever accept theirs not?
Thank you, Counsel Panalakis. I recognize Counsel Smith. After that, Joanne Grasso and we'll move on down the line. Counsel Smith?
Thank you, Your Honor. I won't be supporting and accepting this letter. And the reason being is, this is the narrative. I've read it. To me, it reads like a wish list, which we know it is. I'm not saying that what should be done there is, you know, everything that's in here. And you can read the actual document. That's the middle school educational narrative, which is the one-page summaries, the bullet summaries, that actually takes a lot of this... The documents are almost different. One gets into very specifics, which is the staff interview document, gets into very specifics of what each teacher wishes to have in each one of their classrooms. And there's a lot of repetitiveness through it. You know, an LCD projector with screen possibly motorized in almost every classroom, those type of things. But the point coming down to what we have from the study circles, what we've heard tonight, is very clear. This letter is not. This letter is ambiguous. I don't want to have... I will not be supporting this because I want the Parrot Avenue site to be renovated. This letter, to me, says they're going to study about it. I will be more than happy to support expending funds to begin an architectural study, maybe even with some of these narratives, but not to look at this all over again so that someone can say, "Well, this document doesn't fit, so we're back to Jones Avenue", or "we have to start all over again". So if the intent of the school department was to come... And the school board was to come back and do just as I'm saying. I'm glad we're all on the same sheet of music, and I'm really hoping they come back with a letter that states just that. But as this is written, it is too unclear that we're just going to be studying this thing all over again. And, you know, and if anyone hasn't had a chance to read the narrative, please go on the website, read it, and look at it so that you can understand what it is we're talking about here. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Smith. Next, Counsel Grasso.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I guess I'm looking at this letter as a way for the renovation of the middle school to get off the ground. I'm looking at it as an arrow that's pointing forward. And I have gotten a lot of calls from people telling me not to vote for this because they did not think we needed to do athletic fields or parking or bus routes and so forth, the bus safety. But in order to get any building aid from the state, these things have to be in place before you start your building. You need to have the athletic fields someplace, and they have to be part of this, part of the project. You need to have parking, legal parking for the staff. The parking at the current middle school, the land does not belong to the school, so anybody in the city can park there. And they do. And they do. And we need to have a place where parents can safely drop off the students and then pick them up, and where the buses can pull in off the road for the children to get on and then to get off in the morning and get on again at night. And these are things that the state will require us to have in place before we start getting state aid on the renovation of the school. So I guess I'm looking at this more broadly than Council Smith is, but I'm looking at it as a way to get this off the ground.
Thank you, Council Grasso. Council Dwyer.
I agree with all the things that everyone has said, and I think they've just been building until what Joanne just said, which is how I feel as well, that I really want to get this off the ground. So I wanted to, I can read this literally, but I don't want to read it literally because I don't think that's the intent. And I think it's up to us to express an intent back for what we would fund, rather than kick it back and sort of send us something we will do. And let me just put a few things forward, and maybe that will become a motion of what we can fund. I want to take this in the good faith effort that the school board is ready to select Parrot Avenue. And I want to use the word redesign. I think when we use the word renovate, sometimes that has gotten folks off track because they think we're just trying to, like, fix up the school a little bit, you know, clean up the bathrooms, fix it up a little bit. And I think I want to make sure, particularly for the staff, that they understand that's not what we really are talking about here. We really need to do a redesign of the building to bring it up to, you know, what it should be to support education. I know the word, and I thought Mr. Caviello's presentation was very good. Almost every word here has been kind of used up, and so it's hard to talk about this. Feasibility, everybody is right in saying, you know, we've had these feasibility studies. I know, because I was the one who put the motions forth in the last CIPs to add the money to do these feasibility studies. I'm not sure what we're talking about is a feasibility study to determine whether we need the site or not, but whether we can bond. We need more information, and we, as a council, need more information, certainly the school board does, but about what we would be bonding. We need to get closer to having a handle on what it would take to build a building with the new ideas that have been put forth. I choose to read this letter not to include these conditions. In a literal reading, as Ms. Chellman said, does not put these conditions forth, and I'm going to choose to read it that way, that in their wisdom, the school board did not make these conditions of approval. These are things that a cost study and a feasibility study needs to take into consideration. The one thing I would say we want to be careful with, and I have a thing later about that on the athletic fields, is that we know that that site itself doesn't have to provide the athletic fields on that site. We all know that. We've heard the state say that. So what I would choose to read this as is a request that we put the funds forth, that the school board and the city together can work on the conceptual plan that will make Parrot Avenue work, conceptual enough, designed enough, that we will know what we're bonding, what we're seeking for property, what kinds of changes we would have to put forth, that it include options. It wouldn't be a full design because there are so many options. In my mind, there are so many options that one could do on that property, as someone said, going from the library to the parking lot. There are many different ways one could configure a middle school there. And I think we want to know those options. I think we want to know what they would cost. I don't think we know that yet. Sad to say, it's three years later, we don't know that yet, but we need to know that to move it forward.
Thank you, Council Dwyer. Council, understanding your remarks, or listening to your remarks and asking, I presume you're not offering an amendment. You're indicating your interpretation of the letter. Is there an amendment that you are seeking to offer?
I think it's more than an amendment. I mean, I would, I think we need more discussion to refine a little bit.
They've got the message.
What I've just said. And I'd like to hear some words more to, whether it's from the city manager or the city attorney, other counselors, about what we would specifically be asking a study to do, because I want to make sure we're very precise in this.
Thank you, Council Dwyer. Council Reynolds.
Thank you, Assistant Mayor. And I hope that what I have to say could perhaps build on what Council Dwyer is suggesting and speak largely in agreement with the other counselors who have spoken. Boy, with respect to the motion that's been made, as others have said, Council of White House and Council Smith, I could not support a simple positive response to this letter and appropriation of funds for an architectural feasibility study. I agree with the fact that I don't think we need a feasibility study. We have had feasibility studies. The school board has done that. We've had two processes, of course. First, the first building committee that the school board and council collaborated on, and then the second, joint school advisory committee, where we went back over and with additional funds, we did some additional work. And at that point, team design presented, you know, a potential conceptual design that said, yes, it is feasible to put, to renovate the middle school where it is. So we don't need to decide, we don't need another feasibility study to look at whether it's possible. What we need is to move forward with a process and the retention of a highly qualified architectural firm to look at how. How could we retain, how could we substantially renovate, add on if necessary, to the Parrot Avenue Middle School to retain the middle school in its downtown location? There are several options with respect to use of land, alternative building designs, and alternative ways of meeting the needs that have been identified, such as parking, such as athletic fields. What we need is, I want to move forward, I want the city to be able to move forward. And the only part of Council Dwyer's statement that I don't agree with is that I think it, we need more than conceptual plans. We need fairly specific plans, because if we're ever going to issue a bond, we need to know for how much, to do what. And we also, I think, you know, the elephant in the room here, is that we need to, different options for renovating and adding on to the middle school on-site on Parrot Avenue are going to involve, could involve, different choices about land adjacent on either side of the middle school. We have Alumni Field, and we have, you know, Rogers Street that's been mentioned, and we have the parking lot at the end of Parrot Avenue, and we have, you know, other options. Those are political choices, will-of-the-community-type choices that we'll have to confront. But I think that we can only confront those when we're presented with rather specific choices, design options. And so what I'm hoping that we might be able to do is to perhaps get the maker of the motion to withdraw the motion, and that we can, perhaps through more discussion here, fashion a substitute motion in which we would move and authorize the expenditure of funds, move to create a small committee composed of a member of the public who has come forward to us and volunteered considerable expertise in retaining architectural firms to work with a couple of, a handful of other members. I might suggest the city manager and the superintendent of schools, along with one school board member and one city counselor, to go out and conduct a proactive search of highly qualified architectural firms for our purposes. Our purposes being considerable experience in renovating and adding on to a historic building, a historic school, which of course is a particular specialized type of building in a constrained urban environment. That's a very specialized kind of expertise that we need. And I am in agreement with folks who have said that suggested that an RFP issued to try and retain firms with the right expertise might not yield what we need because, as one of the speakers said, we don't necessarily need, you know, firms that aren't that busy, that are willing to chase the kind of work we have. We need to identify these highly qualified firms in a proactive way, sift and sort, and retain one to work with us to give us different design options.
Thank you, Council Reynolds. And again, because it will get too unwieldy, I don't want to get bogged down in motion practice. I understand what he's trying to speak to, and more comments are obviously in order from other counselors. Council Panalakis, then, Council Smith.
Yes, I think we have to take into consideration that we have an elected school board that asked, came to us and asked for this money. That is their job. Our job is to bond. And before we ever start at this city picking our own firms without RFPs, I would have to be very against that. That's why we have the process, that it's fair and done the right way. If we did it the other way, it acts as if we're picking a special person. So I would not be for seeing some firm that we thought we liked and agreed to that. But I think we need to make a decision if we're going to, however we're going to do renovate or whatever you want to call it to the middle school. We need to get started on that, and the only way we're going to get started is to move forward with an architect. And team design did not have the idea, as I understand it, to go towards Rogers Road, which gives us a lot more land. And so I think we need to look at this and start something in process, or we're just going to be doing this again in January 2008 and again in January 2009 if we don't start moving. And there is always a committee that's set up by state law that looks over this. We did this for the high school, and we can do it in the future. But I don't think we should set up any more small committees or anything. This is the school board's job, and our job is to bond.
Council Smith, I had recognized next. The city manager also wants to speak perhaps, but Council Smith, if you would.
Thank you. My first question is going to be to the city manager and to the city attorney, and that is, one, are we allowed to amend the letter that's in front of us? And the second thing is that it doesn't say, how much money are we talking about here? So I'd like those clarifications, and then I'll continue my remarks.
Thank you, Council Smith.
Can I speak to that, Your Honor?
City manager, please, go ahead.
Council Dwyer had asked, had called me last week, and I did do some research and pulled out the memorandum from May 9, 2000, as it relates to the joint building committee. I have copies of that, and I will pass those along to the council members. I think it's important, and I'll have the city attorney speak to it, but the issue really could probably, first of all, I think it is important that it's recognized that the school board brought this information in. I think it's at this time that the city council needs to look at the idea of a joint building committee. There were many people in the audience tonight that were talking about many issues as it relates to participation, and as the city attorney has opined in his letter, there has to, in the statutes, there has to be an equal amount of people from the school board and from the city council to sit on the joint building committee. And so, for example, there could be three people from the school board, three people from the city council, and three people from the public in general to sit on the joint building committee. The statute is pretty clear, and again, it rarely states that no schoolhouse shall be erected, altered, remodeled, or changed in the city school district unless the plans have been previously submitted to the school board of the district and have received its approval. There are also, in this memorandum, a lot of discussion as it relates to the joint building committee process. And I guess the city attorney has looked at this, and one of the questions would be, and I know it's always a difficult one, when is the joint building committee constituted? Can it be constituted now? And by virtue of constituting the building committee, you've essentially picked the site if the joint building committee is constituted. Bob, could you elaborate on the memorandum that you provided?
Sure. In situations such as we have in Portsmouth, where the school department is a department of the municipal governments, and that's the rarity, actually, in the state, the process for building a school is that the school board picks the site, and as Council Panalakis said, the city council provides the money. This creates kind of a dynamic tension, which really compels everyone ultimately to reach agreement. The school board can't build it without money from the council, and the council can't build it without a site being selected by the school board. The joint building committee actually gets created after the site is selected and the money's been provided, and the duty of the joint building committee is to spend the money provided by the city council to build a school according to the design and in the location selected by the school board. You know, I therefore have advised in the past against using the term joint building committee until you've reached the point in the process where you actually have the statutory joint building committee. Such an item as site selection is really not a function of the joint building committee. I hope that's helpful. I might add one more thing. I happened to be present at the school board, at the last school board meeting when this letter was discussed, and I indicated to the school board, based upon my reading of the letter, that if the city council wished to respond positively to this letter, what the council would likely do would be to forward the matter to the city manager and the superintendent of schools together to determine in an administrative fashion what would need to be done in order to advance the concept of building on Parrot Avenue.
Anything further from the city attorney or the city manager at this time?
Well, I think it's probably important to elaborate on what the city attorney said because we have used in the past, and the, not the actual words, joint building committee, but the, there has been, when we did the high school, we did have some subset of that before the fact, before we had the bonding in place, I believe. Joanne, I thought we had a subset of that.
I was not aware that we did.
Okay, no. I was almost, I thought that before we had the bonding amount, because we had to get...
It could have been.
Because it's really difficult to, because there's a lot of factors here before the joint building committee is formed, because the bonding amounts could range substantially for purchase of land and the alternatives. And I think that probably a good word that was used was "design alternative." So it really is a tough one for us here because we need to, if you're going to do more of a design for the school itself, you're talking about, if you're going beyond conceptual designs, you're talking about a lot more money.
Yeah.
You probably would be bonding that, probably typically 8% of the cost of the actual building for design, complete plans for a school. I guess it's really in all, the words, and I think Council Dwyer kind of was hitting on it, the words in this letter say one thing, but I think the intent is, and again, the only way to find out that intent is from the school board. And I know the chairman is here tonight, but we stand ready, from the city perspective, to give the assistance necessary from a technical perspective. We have a procurement policy in place as it relates to professional services. Clearly, we would put together what scope of services are requested by either the school department or the city council, or a combination of both. We would then encourage anybody that has architectural firms that they know of to submit those firms' names, because the proposal could go out to 25, 30, 40 architects, because we want to get the best person to do the job at this particular site. So I guess the only way, what I can say from a city, from the city manager and from the staff on the city side's perspective, we stand ready to assist whatever the council determines our role should be.
Well, thank you, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you.
Finish my comments?
Council Smith.
Thank you. Then with that in mind, I would like to table this to our next, to our next regular meeting, requesting three informational items back, and that is, one, is the Parrot Avenue the site?
Just a point, when you table something, you have to table it indefinitely. It would be to continue this issue.
For information back.
Yeah, I think it would be to continue.
To time certain.
Yeah.
For information back, if the Parrot Avenue is the site?
Well, let me, I just have to do this, and I got to check with Attorney Sullivan. Since it's not technically a tabling motion, then it does not take precedence. Is that correct?
The appropriate motion, I think, would actually be to postpone.
And a motion to postpone would take precedent, would it not?
Then I'll make the motion to postpone for information back, specifically, is it the intent of the school board that the Parrot Avenue is the site? Two, what is the amount of money they're looking for the, for the architectural study? If, and basically, in the intent of the letter.
I second that motion. Ask for a roll call.
Okay, discussion. And I'd like to, let's, before we get further, the city manager requests a comment. Please go ahead.
You know, the one thing I would have to say about the second part, the first part, obviously, is a policy issue. The second part, how much is, are they expecting for the cost of the alternative design study or whatever it's going to be described as? Under our procurement policies, what we do, when we go for professional services, it's not like buying a car or a truck. You don't go with the low bidder. You basically, through the procurement, you go and do your request for proposal, you put together your scope of services, it comes back in, you interview your proposed architects, and then you make your determination based on a set of criteria, but you really don't open up what their fee is. But you really don't open up what their fee is until after the, the group, whatever committee is interviewing, makes a decision, yes, these people here fit the mold of what we want, they, they know how to deal with buildings of this age, they know the sustainability, they know et cetera, et cetera, whatever was in the scope of services. And you pick maybe the top two and then you open it up and you see one is X dollars and one is Y dollars. And you, you then authorize, or somebody authorizes, the city attorney to negotiate with the, the top choice. And if the numbers, if need, need to be adjusted, then maybe through the scope of services, it can be adjusted. And then you come back to the city council and, and ask for a certain amount of money. Only because I think this is, this is, this has a, this may range differently than you're setting a $25,000 number or a $50,000 number. I think at this point you want to, what I hear is that people are interested in getting the right firm. You want to have a procurement process that gets people through a scope of services into the room that you, that committee, whoever makes the choice, is very comfortable with that professional services that they're going to render and then come back with a number to the city council. That's all, that's just a comment.
So what we might do is try and tighten this down?
Well, thank you, because basically that was my intent. I was, my intent was, I realized this is going to be more than $30,000. But I just didn't want to have to get into a whole issue now of trying to bond all of it. I'd like to know what the intent is. And really, I guess it's more clarification of the intent of the letter has the discussion has been tonight. And that is, is the Parrot Avenue the site? And what is it, and I was trying not to use the word feasibility study, but what is it that there, and again, because we're, we're all trying to use different words here, but what is it the intent that, that we're looking for? And, and I think Mr. Behanko pretty much summed it up where I'm looking for, is for him to sit down with the superintendent of school, Dr. Lister, and be able to work out those details if we can get it back to our next August meeting and so that we can proceed with this. Because I don't want this to be another library issue where it took so many years to finally get this thing done. But let's start on this process. But the first things first, and that is, is the Parrot Avenue the site?
Thank you, Counsel Smith. I think we're going to get to those who have their hands up, but I want to make sure that we clarify what is before us. So I'm not going to ask you to read that back because there was, I, I think Counselor Smith's first point, let's just go with the first point. Could you reiterate that again for us, please?
Very clearly. Is it the intent of the school board that the Parrot Avenue is the chosen site? Period.
That's an easy one. The second one, the second part of your motion to continue this to the next meeting, engendered some discussion between you and the city manager that was somewhat involved. We probably want to try and boil that down so that we can have a clear motion before us because there's going to be more discussion and maybe we'll get there.
Can I just add that?
Could we let the city manager speak?
Absolutely. Yeah. Is that okay? There was a word used, there was a discussion that I think it was Tony Caviallo that brought it up, design alternatives. I guess, I know how people feel, you know, if, if the motion passed with the site being chosen, I think you have to look at design alternatives to determine what you really have out there. I mean, the, you know, you already have a lot of work that's been done by team design in, in one section of it, but design alternatives to the other side. And I know that Counselor Smith has mentioned that the narratives and things within the narrative can be called out and put in so that you actually have a design alternative that would then also talk about potential costs for those alternatives. So you're never going to hit the number right on with, with the bonding number, but I think if you have a design alternatives that would include costs for those alternatives, they can be conceptual in nature, obviously you're not going to have fully designed plans for alternatives, but they would be conceptual in nature to get you a better idea where you're going and, and how much it's going to cost you. Because that would also include costs of land and other things.
Well, just if, if I may then, given that explanation, perhaps only the first question needs to be answered. And I, and I just raised that because if we were to also indicate that we want back from them a request for design alternatives, I think that's what, if we were to boil it down, that's what it would say, we would request that they specify the site and that they make a request for an opportunity to provide design alternatives. Is that in keeping with what you're saying?
Yes, and I'm, I'm looking for those design alternatives.
Okay. So it sounds like we're closer to a motion. You've made your motion. Did someone second that?
Yes.
I did.
All right, John seconded it. John, we got a lot of people who need to speak. You folks have spoken, so I'm going to recognize Counsel Smith. We're going to recognize you too. I'm sorry.
To continue?
The motion is to postpone, the motion that we are voting on is to postpone to the next meeting with a request of the school board to indicate, A, do they choose a site? All right, we already have it written down once, so don't write it down again. And then second, if, given that they have chosen a site, they would, would they then require us to provide funds for design analysis and, and consideration of design alternatives?
Correct.
All right. Now, that's before us, it's seconded, it's under discussion. And while a number of you wish to speak, I'm certainly going to recognize you, but Counselor Hines has yet to speak, so if you would.
Thank you, Your Honor. The motion that I seconded had the word postpone in it, which is in some ways a tabling motion, but with a time certain for an opportunity to work out the details that have been discussed for the past 10 minutes. Those can be discussed after the postponement. We don't necessarily have to come up with all of the answers tonight before we even vote on whether or not we want to postpone the vote. So my question would be again, why not ask the council to vote on the postponement issue, after which whatever else we need for time can be taken up to discuss the reasons why we need that time to discuss the issues.
Thank you, Counsel Hines. Counsel Dwyer.
I, that was very clearly stated and helps me to say why I want to vote against the postponement. Because I think the, everything that is in the motion can be accomplished with a different motion and not postpone. And so rather than kick it further ahead, that's why I will vote against the postponement. Because I think that this discussion was extremely helpful and says exactly what we need to affirmatively say we will do. And so rather than postpone it and query it, I would affirmatively say what we will do. Now, I understand we're going to vote on postponement first, but that's why I'm not going to vote to postpone.
Okay.
The issue on the table at this time is motion seconded to discuss postponement. If you wish to bring anything else in, you can do that after we vote on whether or not we approve the postponement.
Thank you, Counsel Hines. Counsel Whitehouse.
Yes. When we talk about, you know, design alternatives, I, I think we better keep in mind that the state has already offered to grant waivers on certain state standards.
That's not true.
It is true. They've come before the school board and they've often spoke about it. So I, I think we better keep that in mind when we talk about our design alternatives. But I am going to support the postponement motion.
Thank you, Counsel Whitehouse. Now, who else has their hands up and needs to be recognized here? Counsel Panalakis, could you want to speak?
Yes, I, I do, I cannot support the postponement. Because I feel as though we need to move on with this. And I, they say, the letter said, we are prepared to support it. And they're asking for a architectural feasibility or whatever you want to call it, study. If this is not, if, if this is not done, how are we going to know what we're going to do down there, number one? Number two, how much is it going to cost? If the school board came out and said, we're going to do Parrot Avenue no matter what, and the bill came out to 60 million or 80 million dollars, I think the taxpayers in the city would be a little bit upset. They're asking for an architectural study. And I think that this is what that council should give to them and put into this, if you have stipulations you want to put into it, that's your privilege. But we are really stepping overboard as far as this council's concerned in what we're supposed to be doing. The bottom line is money is what we're supposed to be giving.
Thank you, Counselor Panalakis. Counsel Reynolds.
Thank you, Assistant Mayor. I don't envy you being in the chair tonight, trying to, trying to preside over this, over this discussion and keep it sort of, you know, procedurally correct with speaking to motions, et cetera. It's, it's very difficult. I'm going to do my, my best here. I would support Counselor Smith's motion to postpone pending response to the question, which I hear as a yes or no question to the, to the school board. Have you chosen Parrot Avenue or not?
We need a motion to suspend the rules.
And secondly, you know, the additional, the additional work. I wouldn't support post, the only reason I would support postponing is because I feel as though this, the suggestion I made to modify the motion to form a, a small committee, compose, I mean, I've heard the discussion go to, you know, perhaps the city attorney and the city manager could work, you know, on an RFP and put that out there. I, I actually feel that that's sort of punting too much to, you know, to city staff. I think, I, I don't know, I don't know how to, how to move this forward.
Let's call the question.
Let's, well, let's, before us is the question, but I'm, I'm going to give the gavel to Counsel Grasso and say, if she would be kind enough, thank you for recognizing me. I wouldn't blame her if she didn't. I should point out that whether it's Counsel, we don't want to get bogged down in procedure here, whether it's, it's Counsel Dwyer saying, we can do it within the ambit of what's already there in the letter, or whether it's Counselor Smith saying, the letter's not precise enough for me. I suspect we've made it fairly clear that we've heard what everybody's had to say. There are people here from the school board who no doubt understand that if you pick any word out of that letter, maybe the worst one is if, because it's conditional, and you get it out of there, then maybe we get somewhere. The problem is, we're in a procedural issue of, of an attempt, a good faith attempt to try and solve this matter. And so I believe that, you know, I will vote against the motion to postpone in the hopes that we can somehow clarify this and move this more quickly. But he's, I, I think Counselor Smith is doing the right thing by trying to get that kind of clarity because that's really his concern. And so frankly, whether it fails or whether it, it doesn't, we're going to try to get to this issue and move on. And I think we're all pretty close to the same page here with, with some exceptions. So the question, it's been requested that the question be called. If you would return the gavel, I am done. And let's call the question on Counselor Smith's motion. All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Okay. Let's do a roll call so that she doesn't...
Counsel Grasso?
No.
Counsel Dwyer?
No.
Counsel Reynolds?
Yes.
Counsel Panalakis?
No.
Counsel Whitehouse?
Yes.
Counsel Smith?
Yes.
Counsel Hines?
Yes.
Assistant Mayor Farini?
No, what's, what's the tally?
Four, four. If he loses.
So the motion fails. Now we're back to the premier motion.
Okay.
And perhaps we could proceed further to try and get where we're trying to go.
Okay.
Counsel Dwyer.
Working, working with the spirit that Counselor Smith put forth. A motion that would authorize...
Do we have a motion on the floor?
No, no, we have a pending motion.
Yeah.
And the pending motion is to accept the letter. Right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so I would be amending this then.
You would.
Okay. Amending that motion, accepting that the letter has identified Parrot Avenue as the site, to authorize the city manager to work with the superintendent of schools to develop an appropriate RFP for design alternatives that, you know, and people can, well, here's what's on my mind, that would be reviewed by both the city, representatives of the city council and the school board prior to being issued.
Okay, we have a motion pending. It is an amendment to the motion.
Your Honor.
And we're going to speak to it in, in a moment. Are you in a position to read it back?
No.
No? Okay, all right. Well, I think we just, we've got a second. So now we're going to have discussion. Counsel Whitehouse.
Speaking in reference to the amendment, I'd like to refer this to a city attorney. Does it change the main motion drastically with this amendment that we should have a withdrawal of the original motion and a new motion made? Yes or no?
If you can. No, no, no. That's a good question. I actually believe that you are correct and that does.
Speak louder, would you please?
I believe that you are correct and that it does.
You hear that, Your Honor?
Let's have that again. For the benefit of all concerned.
All right, let me explain a little bit further. Simply accepting the letter from the school board would be to take no action. The amendment proposes action. And therefore I believe that the amendment is such a significant change from the original motion that the preferred alternative would be to withdraw the initial motion and make the amendment as a standalone motion.
Yeah, I'll withdraw my motion.
Does the, is that acceptable to the second?
I think I was a second, yes.
Do we now have before us Counsel Dwyer's motion? Yes, we do. Okay.
I'll second her motion.
Discussion.
So if I understand the motion...
Counselor, yes, city manager.
Authorize the city manager to work with the superintendent of schools for design alternatives to be reviewed by representatives from the school board and the city council? Is that what you came forward with?
But, but another piece of it was accepting, and by, and therefore accepting Parrot Avenue as the site for the middle school.
I think she specified at the beginning of her motion that...
At the beginning, right.
I am duty bound to ask if there is more discussion. Counsel Smith.
Thank you. It is, the, is it from the legal point of view, from the city attorney, that we, this will have them choose that it will either be Parrot, that Parrot Avenue is the chosen site? That we'll get an answer, yes or no on that?
It is certainly a major step in that direction. However, however, until, one of the issues, and this came up during the school board discussion, is the site isn't really defined in this letter. Parrot Avenue is defined in the letter. But the site could be anywhere from the library to Pleasant Street.
See, that's what takes, again, that's why he's an attorney. And that's what, that, why I have such a problem with this letter. Because it uses the words that they affirm to the city council that it's prepared to support the site if the city council will provide the necessary funds to have the architectural feasibility decision, study to determine whether the Parrot Avenue site supports, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
But, but Counsel Smith, we're not voting on, the letter's history at this point. We're dealing with that motion.
I understand it. And that's why I'm going to ask for clarification in the motion that we get information back here that will state that Parrot Avenue, not specifically where it is, you know, as it is now, Parrot Avenue is the chosen site from the school board. Period. I have to have that, that...
Respectfully, I think Counsel Dwyer did specify that that be...
I was trying to do that, but...
I think we're all on the same page.
Yeah.
Could we have the motion read again?
Yes, I think we need to do that.
So that we all understand it? I, because I'm not totally clear.
No, that's right. We got to do that.
Amend the motion to...
No, no. No, we have a substitute motion, right?
Oh, that's right, a substitute. Motion to accept, for the exception, that Parrot Island, Parrot Avenue is the site and that the city manager and the school board will work together...
Superintendent of schools.
Superintendent of schools.
Superintendent of schools.
For design alternatives.
Will work together on design alternatives.
An RFP for design alternatives.
An RFP for design alternatives. Which shall be shown to members of the school board and the city council.
Then, Your Honor, with, with that...
Circulated to.
Circulated to, let's say circulated to.
Then with that, I ask the question, if it comes back that it is not the exact location that the school board has, may change it one way or the other, does that automatically bring it back to us with that answer?
I think respectfully, I'm going to pass the gavel again and just make a comment. At, at this point, I think we are all people of good faith. May, may I speak?
Yes, Your Honor.
I think we're all people of good faith and I think if we get too hyper-technical at this point, we're going beyond the scope of what we need to do. I believe we'll get a full and complete response back that will be clear. And I, I see heads shaking in the audience and I have good faith that that will happen.
And I, I see heads shaking in the audience, and I have good faith that that will happen. I think I can see the concern, given the, the wordsmithing of the previous letter, that's now in the past, and I think that Counselor Dwyer's motion with our collective input gets us a lot closer, and, and I think, I think we're on pretty solid ground if we just take this on trust and move forward.
Your honor, I'll return the gavel and ask that we call the question.
I'm looking at all of you. Any further comment? Counselor Reynolds?
Assistant Mayor, I, you know, I hate to have to do this, but in terms of the amount of, you know, controversy, significant disagreement, extensive, you know, consultation in the community that there's been on this subject, I think that we have to be extremely clear, and we have to have as full a discussion as we, as we can, unconstrained, if necessary, by, you know, certain procedures. I think, you know, I hear Counselor Dwyer's motion essentially being one to, you know, interpret the letter, reinterpret the letter, to mean that the, that the school board has chosen Parrott Avenue as the site, and to move forward with, with a process to retain, you know, to develop an RFP and then, and then retain a firm to, to design the school. I suppose if we, if we pass this motion, and the school board doesn't agree with our, you know, reinterpretation of their letter, I guess they'll let us know. So in that sense, I suppose I can support the motion that Counselor Dwyer is making. I, I would like to, to add into the debate, into the discussion here, that I, I think that what Counselor Dwyer is suggesting is, is moving a little bit too quickly, and I think putting too much expectation and, and responsibility and on the city man, on the, on the city manager and the city attorney to write an RFP, to try and get the, a firm, to try and get firms to bid on our, on our job, that is gonna give us an optimal result. I'm not suggesting, my remarks earlier, I'm not suggesting some kind of alternative to the JBC process. I'm suggesting a supplemental process in which we would take advantage of some expertise that's out there in the community, Mr. Chellman, who came to the podium earlier with significant experience in reviewing the qualifications and selecting firms. I don't know if everyone here on the council has had the chance to, you know, has seen email traffic, has had a chance to talk with him. I'm trying to air this now because I don't want anybody to think that there's any sort of hidden agendas, or anybody's angling for the job. Mr. Chellman is certainly not angling for the job himself. He is a, a community member with significant expertise who's, who's volunteered his time. I think he could assist the city manager and the city attorney, but I think even then, just having one community member to do that, I think people would wonder, well, what's going on behind closed doors? That's why I suggested, well, let's add us one school board member, and let's add one city councilor to that process, so that everyone can be assured that the process that we're, that we're following is, is, you know, above board, and all of it is aimed at getting the optimal outcome for the city.
Thank you, Counselor Reynolds. Counselor Dwyer?
When I included the term "city manager" in my motion, I didn't expect that John would be doing this by himself. And so I under, I understand that what Counselor Reynolds is saying. I, I expect that the city manager will call upon, staff would call upon expertise as needed in order to prepare such an RFP. And so therefore, I am not worried that we have to specify, you know, who, who it would be or how it would be done.
And, and one thing I would have to say is there's certain procurement that we have to put in place. If it was a JBC that was constituted officially by this, of course, you could have somebody, if, if whoever, from the community beyond that. But it gets a little dicey when you just pick and choose people to be on a procurement process that, you know, you can ask people for their input, and you can help, and circulate the RFP to people and say, okay, this is the scope that we're gonna put out, what are your thoughts on it? What would you add? What would you subtract? But once the RFP goes out, we have a certain procurement process that we're gonna have to stick with, so that everybody's treated fairly.
Well, if I might, is it a fair statement, asked the city manager, given what he has just represented to us, that this will be an open process within the, within the ambit of what Christine has offered, and that indeed we'll have an, you know, we'll have an opportunity to have those, those bits of input be given to him prior to the procurement process being triggered?
Well, what I, I think is important, that I understand, is I would, I would want to make sure that, that certainly we would take in people that have firms that they think are, are good firms, that would be able to do this, sure, if they submit the, the name of the firm, or if we have the RFP available, if people have suggestions, but at the end of the day, we have to follow certain procedures.
Counselor Panalakis?
Yes, I just think that we need to step back a little bit here. We have a city manager and a city attorney that take care of our affairs and our RFPs all the time, and we've had good results of them. And I think that we ought to have respect for our staff, and not put stipulations on them from someone from the outside to come in to tell us what to do. This, RFPs have to go out. If people wanna vote and put them in, to put in for them, they can do it. But I don't think we, as a council, should ever decide that one person should tell us who we should have for a firm, or somebody else should have for a firm. It doesn't look right.
Thank you, Counselor Panalakis. We've heard some discussion on this motion. The motion is now pending. Someone has called the question. We've heard additional discussion. Is there any further discussion off it? Hearing none, we'll ask for a vote.
Let a bankroll call.
And we will, yes, agree to make it a roll call vote.
Counselor Grasso?
Yes.
Counselor Dwyer?
Yes.
Counselor Reynolds?
Yes.
Counselor Panalakis?
Yes.
Counselor Whitehouse?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Hines?
Yes.
Assistant Mayor Farini?
Yes. And the chair will now entertain a motion for recess?
Some more.
Do we have a second? All in favor? Recess.
Yes. Just a few seconds.
I'm gonna call the meeting to order. I see Counselor Panalakis approaching. The hour's getting late, and we have a lengthy agenda ahead of us. And so as, as Counsel Panalakis makes her way, I'll direct your attention to item H, 10H, a letter from Sam Bennett and Alec Lager, Portsmouth Fair Trade Coalition, requesting permission to hold the Benefit Jazz Concert and Fair Trade Craft Bazaar on Saturday, August 18th, 2007, in the Vaughan Mall. And you've had an opportunity to review that letter. Do I have a motion? Your honor? Counselor Reynolds?
Move the city manager with power.
Second.
I'm going to call the meeting to order. I see Councilor Penelakis approaching. The hour's getting late and we have a lengthy agenda ahead of us. And so as, as Council Penelakis makes her way, I'll direct your attention to item H, 10H. A letter from Sam Bennett and Alec Lager, Portsmouth Fair Trade Coalition requesting permission to hold the Benefit Jazz Concert and Fair Trade Craft Bazaar on Saturday, August 18th, 2007 in the Vaughan Mall. And you've had an opportunity to review that letter. Do I have a motion?
Your Honor.
Sorry. Council Reynolds.
I move for the city manager with power.
Second.
All in favor? Oh, my apologies, Council Whitehouse, if you please. My apologies.
Speaking on the motion, I see in the letter, it seems as though every time a request comes before us now, they, they mention amplification of music. They understand that loud music draws people to the Vaughan Mall, especially as they pass Congress Street. That's what the letters say. So I hope the city manager notifies them that, you know, certain type amplification won't be tolerated.
Noted. Thank you, Council Whitehouse. Any other questions or comments? Are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Tastes unanimously. Now, we go to the city manager's portion of the agenda. We have addressed the resolution. We have addressed the letter from what Ellen Reed Financial Advisors, I believe. But we have before us the rooming house ordinance. We will get to that under a later portion of the agenda. And now, we get to the city manager's report back regarding the Riverwalk and the proposed land conveyance between the city and De Lorenzo Real Estate, LLC.
Thank you, Your Honor. The proposal you have before you, as you've indicated, is a report back from the planning board in which they have indicated that they are in favor of this exchange of land. What I have attached is a, a map that shows the exchange of land that is contemplated. And if you look at the map, you, you can see that we've labeled it item two and item one. Item two is the land that would be received from the De Lorenzo. And item one would be the land that would be received from the city. Very, not, not a huge amount of land. But what it essentially does is allow us the city to get started on the Riverwalk project. And as I've indicated in the past, there have been a lot of, a lot of time and effort spent on the project. A lot of people have interests in the, in the project and are supportive of it. But also have private interests that they feel that they need to discuss and have protected. It, it has been a complicated project. This exchange, being not a large exchange of land, but it is essential to get the process moving along. Now, even if the Riverwalk didn't go forward and the city decided that it, it wanted to do something else, I still would recommend this, this exchange of land because I think it, it is, allows us to do a number of things in that area. And so, the land itself is, is important to get the whole process moving on the Riverwalk. But again, even if the Riverwalk didn't go forward, we'd be able to have some alternatives that we could utilize the land exchange for. So I would recommend the exchange of the land as, as recommended back by the planning board. And I would entertain any questions from the city councils that relates to that.
Thank you. We appreciate your hard work and the hard work of city staff in that regard. At this point, we'll open it up to questions for the city manager, from city council.
Is there a motion on the floor, Your Honor?
There are motions.
Okay. There, there is a motion pending?
No.
The motion has not been made. Somebody needs to make the motion and then we can ask them questions. So would someone, is someone going to make a motion?
Your Honor, I move that we accept the recommendation of the planning board and authorize the city manager to execute the required documents for the conveyance of the property between the city and De Lorenzo Real Estate.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion duly seconded. And do we have questions about this for the city manager, city staff? Council Whitehouse first, then Council Smith.
Well, first of all, I'd like to know, when you transfer a piece of publicly owned land or a piece of taxable piece of property in a, in a land swap, does that require a public hearing either before the planning board or before the city council? I, I believe there's an RSA that that gives reference to this. And I'd like to have the city attorney comment on it.
If this motion passes, then the next step that will be taken is that a lot line relocation or subdivision plan, it's no difference in our practice here, would go to the planning board where there would be a public hearing held.
So at this stage, there's not necessary with the vote of the council to have a public hearing?
Correct.
Because you are giving up a piece of taxable land at this stage.
Correct.
And it's not necessary to have a.
What you are doing, if you pass this motion, is you're authorizing the city manager to take all the steps necessary to effectuate the land change. The first step is to have a subdivision plan approved by the planning board. There will be a public hearing at the planning board.
I'll be speaking more on this later.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Smith.
Thank you, Your Honor. As I, last month, I will not be supporting the motion. And the reason being is not that I don't want the Riverwalk to go forward because I, I certainly think it, it could be a good benefit to the city. But I think there was, we're, we're purposely piecemealing this. There are a lot of issues down there. I think the first one in the intent of this is that the current deck that is down there, that is currently being leased by Poco Diablo's, is in a tourist attraction. It draws people down there. It's, people who I've met coming into the city know that, they all say, hey, where's the place to go? Where's, where's the happening things? They go down to the decks. It's a huge draw for tourism to this community, which we're based on. The second issue is, there is, I cannot support this unless there was a stipulation or something adding it that would guarantee that there would be a way to resolve the trash compactor issue down there. It is not a trash compactor that is just used by two restaurants. It's a trash compactor that's used by several restaurants. That trash compactor, at this point, takes almost eight tons of trash out of there per week, more on a busier day, and it's compacted. If, and as discussions have had in the past, if this went away, it would be up to the restaurant owners to then solve their trash issue. Which means trash should pick up on a daily basis down there. Trash down on, on the sidewalks and on the public streets, that would have to be picked up on a daily basis. Imagine the phone calls we're going to receive from the citizens that live down there of the clanging bottles and all the noise of emptying eight tons of trash per week. The, the other issue is, in order, if the, if that trash issue is not resolved, then one restaurant owner, the Ferry Landing Restaurant, will then have to store his trash behind his property, which would not allow the public to then access further down along what is currently the, the alleyway to get to the, the other restaurants. The, I understand this agreement with the Ferry Landing and other restaurants owners to allow them to diverse, to be able to do mechanicals and, and to be able to get supplies down there. But the public will not be able to. I think that the city staff and the city manager at this point have done a great job in really attempting to move this forward. But I think there are still some, some other questions that have to be resolved. And the trash is one of them. Losing of the deck is one of them. And then it comes down to another major issue, and that is, if the deck was to go away, then the owner of the building, Mr. De Lorenzo, would then have to go forward to get all of the approvals to be able to build the patio, which would be then, you know, part of the, the lease project of Poco Diablo's, for that process to go through. And all of that going along, they have to go through the planning department, the planning board, the HGC, maybe some state agencies for waterfront as well. And all of that, and the timing for all of that, let alone the, the planning board meeting itself for the lot line change, all of that has to take place in a relatively quick time. Because we have certain amounts of monies that have to either be spent or at least dedicated, assuming that the federal government will allow this portion for the, for the sidewalk, I mean, for the Riverwalk, to, to take place. There are a lot of issues that still need to be resolved on this. I'm not against trying to move this process forward. I'm just saying there are certain guarantees that have to take place before I would be able to support this in any way.
Thank you, Counselor Smith. Counselor Smith, the chair recognizes the city manager.
I don't disagree with everything that the councilor said, but I would have to just reiterate that by virtue of making this exchange of land, this very small exchange of land, we're not precluding the city council from taking action to extend the license to have a dumpster at that location. We're not precluding the city council from extending Poco's lease at the existing location on city land. What we're just doing is taking two little pieces of land and exchanging them so that at the future, we will have the opportunity, if we're able to work out the dumpster issue and, and find a solution to that, and if Poco's is able to get its approvals, we'll be able to make move. The city council, in the future, will have the opportunity because the license for the dumpster comes back up before the city council. Well, they have the opportunity to vote for the license. That's number one. Number two, the city council will see the license, the, the lease again. The, the city council could always extend the lease. The idea is, if we don't do this exchange, essentially, we're saying, well, we, we need to reevaluate the whole Riverwalk project at this time. Now, that's fine if, if, if that's what the city council fully understands is going to happen tonight. But just the exchange of these little pieces of land, we could do nothing for the next 10 years. And the city council could extend the license for the dumpster and could extend the lease for Poco's for 20 years at the existing location. That's not going to affect anything by the exchange of this land.
Thank you, city manager. Counsel Dwyer.
I guess it's for those reasons that I wouldn't want to postpone, that I, I, I want to vote in favor of the exchange of the land because I do think we need to move this forward. It's sort of like the last issue. We need to move it forward because we do have to take it one step at a time. And with the safeguards that the city manager has just described, and I appreciate that, you know, the business owners would obviously be concerned that the council is sensitive to those safeguards and that, that those are other issues that have to be addressed. They're different issues than the acceptance of the land. I don't think in this case they all need to go as a package. Because time is of concern, I would want us to move forward on it rather than delay it any further. I know weather is a concern for construction. The grant funds are a concern. So time is really moving on here. And that's why I would want to move it quickly.
Thank you, Counsel Dwyer. Counsel Reynolds, then we'll move down to this side of the table.
Thank you, Assistant Mayor. I agree with Counsel Dwyer and, and I, I will be supporting the motion to move forward with, with the, to authorize the city manager to execute the land swap. I, you know, have had some of the same conversations that, that many of us have had with the affected business owners. And I acknowledge the concerns, you know, that Counsel Smith raises. But I, I don't think that their reason not to move forward, I think that, that the city, the city manager, the city attorney, everyone on the city government's side of this recognizes the importance that Counsel Smith cited, the economic importance, the cultural importance, if you will, of, of the decks and their, their continued success to the city of Portsmouth. And, you know, I have faith that if we get to the point, if, if the future of this project gets to the point in November where plan development, permit approvals on both, of both, on both sides, both the city's part of the project that it needs to, to do to move forward and the business owners' part, that they need plans and approvals, that if all of those things aren't queued up and lined up such that it looks as though they can be successfully executed over the ensuing six months in time for a successful reopening, you know, in this alternative configuration by May, that we as a council could, could take some, some action to ensure that happens. What I would, so with those remarks, what I would like to do is, is, again, I'm going to vote in favor, but I would like to request if the city manager could develop for us a simple, a timeline, perhaps a synchronized timeline. This could be on one page, I think, in terms of the processes that each of us has to go through, the city, in terms of its design and approval, whatever permits we may need to get to do what we're going to do from DES, anybody else, and the process, the, the process that we, the city, have for the affected business to reconstruct its deck in the alternative location. So that we can see that and we can, as we move into the fall, be comfortable that, you know, are we lined up for success from November to May, so that this happens by, you know, a successful reopening of the decks by next May. And if not, then we could perhaps have some of the fallbacks that the city manager has talked about to extend the lease, go to the federal government, ask them if we can, you know, have an extension of the use of the funds. Is, is that a reasonable request?
Thank you. Counselor, Counselor Reynolds has, has not made that a formal motion, but he, he has made an inquiry of the city manager.
Well, I can, I can, obviously, when, if this proceeds, we'll continue along, making sure the city council's advised in every step. My next stop before the city council, if you will, would be to have some design concepts for you to look at. And we'll have to talk about the whole timeline because sometimes it's out of our hands when you're dealing with the DES. So, sure, I think it's fair to say that nobody's looking to have us start tearing up the place and then having this closed for a season. That's just not what we're going to do. That's, that's certainly not what we're interested in. And we will be very cognizant of the businesses down there. I've said it numerous times. I'll continue to say it. I think the track record of the staff proves that out. We're very, very sensitive to the needs down there and will continue to be. This is just one minor step to move forward. And again, there, Counselor Smith has mentioned a number of things in there that we've got to go through. If those aren't achieved and the city council says, no, we think these things need to be achieved and we can't do it, nothing's lost by the exchange of this land, really.
Thank you, city manager. Counselor Reynolds, any further inquiry?
No, that, that.
So I'm going to, I, I noticed Counselor Smith and Counselor Whitehouse both have their hands up. They've both spoken. Before I recognize them, out of courtesy, I'm going to recognize Counsel Penelakis for the first time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just, I, I can go along with the land swap now that it's been explained that we do have the authority to extend everything. But I would like, I know we've been down there and walked where the Riverwalk is. But I would like to have a meeting with all those businesses within a room to let them express to us what their concerns are down there, so that we don't end up doing anything to injure the businesses or, or anything in that respect. But I would like to see us meet with them in a room, the business, tell them how, us how they feel about that Riverwalk and how it should be done. After all, they are the taxpayers and they are the people that draw the people into the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Penelakis. Yep, thank you, Counsel Penelakis. Counsel Whitehouse, then Counsel Smith.
After I make this motion, I still want the floor, Your Honor. I move to suspend the rules on the 10 o'clock issue.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Counsel Whitehouse.
Thank you, Your Honor. You know, the city manager talks about, this is a small piece of the puzzle, the land transactions, the deeds, all, every bit of it. But it all falls in line with other things that will happen, well, will be happening down there. And I'm concerned about the dumpster issue. I've seen plans whereby the dumpster is going to be turned 90 degrees. The openings of the door will be facing directly across Siri Street. There's no way Waste Management can back in and take that dumpster away. He needs a wide turn. Another issue is the timeline. November 1st, if this all takes place, Poco Diablo has to be out of there and relocating the deck across the way. There's no way he can do this and still carry on his business until the middle of October. Another issue is the, has anybody seen the plans of the, of the handicap ramp that will be coming down from Bow Street down across the steps area of Siri Street? It changes the character of that district altogether. It's, it's unbelievable how a handicap ramp comes down to a platform, makes a dogleg turn, goes down to another platform to satisfy the ADA requirements. So, you know, I've let So, you know, I've let my views be known about this River Walk many, many months ago, and there goes another part of Portsmouth's history. It's going to be changed drastically, and I'm definitely against it for all the reasons that I've stated. The dumpster issue, relocating Poco Diablo's, the handicap ramp, and everything else involved.
Thank you, Council Whitehouse. I did say I'd recognize Council Smith. I know Council Grasso has yet to speak, but since I saw him first, I'm going to let him go. Please go ahead.
Pretty much finishing up in the conversation from before, I agree with the city manager. I know that this is a small portion in stepping forward. My problem with it is, as I stated in my opening remark, was I'm looking forward to a stipulation that these other items will take place because I know our timeline for the federal government has been told to us several times that we're up against the wall, that we have to have some monies either spent or, and maybe we can get clarification, is it to be spent, is it to be dedicated by the first of the year?
Let me just speak to that.
Please do.
We didn't want to keep going back to this, before we even got the first step done, what I intended to do is if the land transfer happened, my intent would then be to go to the federal government and ask the question because I didn't want to go to the granting agency before we had this done because if, for example, if, for whatever reason, the city council denies us, my next request would be, well, pretty much the River Walk's dead. I think what we need to do then is reprogram the money. And so I wanted to wait and go to the federal agency once, not to ask them one question, get an answer, and then the next week, go to them and say, oh, by the way, we need another, we need to reprogram that money after I've asked you to extend the use of that money for the River Walk. So, my point is that if we go forward with this exchange of land, which is a very minor item, then my next step will be to go to the federal government, ask if we can extend the deadline on the use of the money.
If you care to inquire the city manager, please go ahead.
To finish that one, would it be the intent of the city manager to do that inquiry prior to the lot line going to the planning board?
Well, let me just respond to that. If, for example, I go to them, and, you know, I think it's important, we need to know what we want to do before I go to them. I mean, I'd like to be able to say to them, will you extend the timeline on this? And if they say, no, you can't extend it, I'd come back to the city council and say, well, number one, we can achieve doing what we want to achieve within the timeline, which may or may not happen, or two, I might say, well, we won't be able to move the dumpster and we won't be able to move Poco's in that timeline, so geez, maybe I ought to go back to the feds and ask them if we can reprogram the money. So, that's really where I'm coming from. I want only make one request of the agency. I don't want to go back multiple times. So, if you give me the authority to do this land transfer, because again, even if the deck stays there for the next 20 years and the dumpster stays there for the next 10 years, the transfer of the land is not going to make a difference.
While I agree with that, I'm just wondering, is it the intent to have that conversation with the federal government prior to the lot line change at the planning board?
I'll make my best effort, but I can't, I can't control when I'll get the response. I mean, we can make a response or a request to the federal government, and they may take a couple of months to get back to me. I don't know. I, you know, I will do that tomorrow. If this passes, we'll make that request.
Council Smith, anything further?
No.
Very good. Looking around the dais, Council Grasso.
Thank you. Your Honor, the reason I'm, I will support this is that we have heard the, in the discussion that the council is willing to extend the lease on the dumpster if necessary and all the other things that are pertaining to the businesses there. These things will be in the minutes of this meeting so that I feel that being in the minutes of the meeting and the good faith of the council that if necessary, when October or whatever comes up and we, and the people need to approach us about extending the lease on the dumpster or anything else there, that they will feel free to do that. But I think it's important, too, that we do this land transfer and get that done.
Thank you, Council Grasso. Any further comments? I'd like to give the gavel to Council Grasso for a moment.
Yes, Your Honor.
Thank you. I would just point out again, not unlike the previous issue with the middle school, I believe that we are people of goodwill and that you've heard enough tonight to demonstrate that the city council has a manner, as does the city manager, to try to address the sensitive and appropriately sensitive issues of the dumpster and the timing of the deck for Poco's, and since we've all gone on record and said that, we then have to pay attention and help as best we can, and so with that, I will be supporting this. I'll take the gavel back. Thank you. Any further comments or questions? Council Smith.
Thank you. I'm going to trust, too, with everything is said, I trust the city manager will make good on his comments this evening, and I will be voting in favor.
Anything else?
I'd just like to know if we're going to be able to have a meeting sometime in the next few months.
Yeah. Sit down with the owners.
My thought will be is to, once the preliminary designs are done, we'll bring them to the city council, and we'll put them up on the screen, and we'll invite the business owners, and we can chew them up and spit them out.
We'll have a grand old time.
We've never had a public hearing on this issue.
And any other?
There'll be one with the, at the planning board.
Any other comments or questions? Council Whitehouse?
No.
Okay. With that, we'll ask for a vote, and I think a roll call is in order.
Excuse me. Council Grasso?
Yes.
Council Dwyer?
Yes.
Council Reynolds?
Yes.
Council Panalakis?
Yes.
Council Whitehouse?
No.
Council Smith?
Yes.
Council Hines?
Yes.
Assistant Mayor Frini?
Yes.
Seven to zero, seven to one?
Seven to one. And on to, thank you, and on we go to the next item on the agenda, which is a report back from the city manager regarding popovers.
Yes. Thank you, Your Honor. The next item is just a report back, as you recall, on May 21st, the city council voted to accept my recommendation for a pilot program for popovers on the square. It appears that there's no problem with relocation of tables and chairs, and I would draw your attention to the photo, and we, you know, where people are enjoying some coffee and there really has been no disruption. I've had Jason Page look at that on a regular basis, and so I would recommend that the city council authorize continuance of the relocation of tables and chairs through the end of the year for popovers on the square.
So moved. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, Your Honor. The next item is a request for street acceptance of Houliway. Attached is a memorandum from the city attorney, which basically indicates that the developer of Houliway has requested street acceptance, and of course, this should probably go to the planning department and Public Works will report back.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
The next item is a request to establish a public necessity hearing for the Route 33 railroad replacement project. I did provide you with a very extensive memorandum from Deborah Finnegan and Assistant City Attorney Suzanne Woodland about this project. In order to proceed with this Route 33 railroad bridge replacement project, it will be necessary for the city council to conduct a hearing to establish the public use and public necessity of the project. This hearing is a prerequisite to the taking of easements or other property interests by eminent domain, should it become necessary, and I say, should it become necessary, to exercise these options. These are the, this would be the traditional easement takings. This is, this is something that we've done for years and years in the event that we can't get a negotiated sale. I would recommend that this hearing take place at your August 20th city council meeting because the necessity of hearing requires 30-day notice. There's a lot of changes in the law regarding eminent domain, and at the meeting on the 20th, I'll have the Assistant City Attorney here as well as the traffic engineer, who was here tonight, waiting patiently if there are any questions, but it's pretty straightforward that we're establishing the hearing for the 20th.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, Your Honor. Next item is acceptance of deed regarding, sorry, is regarding the acceptance of deed for North Mill Pond Conservation Property. At this point, what I would do is I'd refer to the city attorney to give you a brief synopsis of what's taking place.
There is a map in the agenda, and it shows in dark green the parcel of land that's issued here. The State of Emerson and Ruth McCourt, or the Emerson and Ruth McCourt Revocable Trust, rather, as part of a recent subdivision approval, have proposed to give that green piece of land to the city. The planning board has approved accepting it, and all that remains is for the city council to authorize the city manager to accept and record the deed. You will note that it attaches to the land which the city got last year from the Oldport Development LLC, and it will form what really is a rather nice public park down off Mill Pond Way. There is a restriction on the green land that it be kept as a park and for no other purpose, actually very similar restriction to the Pierce Estate property, but it would be a nice park. I certainly recommend that the city council authorize the city manager to accept and record the deed.
And I concur.
So moved.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Council Dwyer.
A question. It's a wonderful piece of land. I'm wondering if we have a definition of park?
No, we do not.
Is that something that at some point we might want to?
It might be to our interest to leave the language with some little room in there to determine, you know, maybe 100 years from now, people will understand park to be something slightly different than we do today, ballpark compared to a nature park, for example.
Well, certainly food for thought for another time. Any further question, any further comment or question with regard to this exciting opportunity for the city? If not, I'll ask for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
That's all I have for the action items, Your Honor. They're just two informational items that I want to bring to your attention. The municipal election filing period is commencing August 27th through Monday, September 10th, and then also a, just an information update on the bus till dusk that is taking place on July 21st and 22nd. That's all I have, and I'll answer any questions that any council member might have regarding any issue.
Question for the city manager. Council Whitehouse.
Mr. City Manager, this busted us. Is this a carryover from last year? Do we approve of this?
Yeah, well, if you look at it, quite frankly, when it came in, it was one of those things that we took a look at and said, well, geez, should this really have city council approval? But given, when I looked at their website, and what they've really done is taken our sidewalk performance guidelines, which allows performers to be on the street, I mean, on the sidewalk, and if they have certain obstructions, then they have to come to the city council and ask for, to, from permission for those obstructions, but if they follow our guidelines, technically, they can be on the sidewalk. There are 57 performers over a two-day period in six locations. I talked to the police department. They, they had, they watched this last year, and it really wasn't a problem. I would have to say that they are technically correct under our guidelines and that they can go forward with those individual performers. The one thing I would hope, and I've made contact with the organizers of the website because they're really, it's each individual performer is going to go out there and do their thing, I've encouraged them to get in touch with us a little earlier, put me on their contact list. I found out about this Thursday, I believe, or Wednesday last week, and so that we can actually work with them to make sure they have a very good and successful busker night. But the premise of the buskers, you'll have to understand, is that they believe that it is their right to be on those sidewalks, to doing, to do what they do in those performances. And the way we've framed the guidelines and which are on our own website, they are within the letter of our guidelines. Now, will some of them stray from that? I suspect that could happen, but we'll evaluate it and see what happens.
Council Whitehouse?
I have supported it. I was down there last year. They are in locations where the sidewalk is quite wide. It causes no obstruction to the pedestrians, and I enjoyed periodic entertainment as I walked along Market Street, Bow Street, Daniel, and up along Congress Street.
Yeah, it, again, it, that same weekend, we're going to have the Bow Street Fair and a few other things going on, but again, they followed the guidelines.
Thank you, Council Whitehouse. Anything further?
Assistant Mayor?
No. Council Reynolds.
Thank you. I just wanted to add a little bit. Appreciate very much the remarks of the city manager, and he's, you know, correct that, yeah, the answer to Council Whitehouse question, yes, it was a follow-on to last year, it was done for the first time, and there was quite extensive effort put forth by the city manager, by the police department, and myself and Council Dwyer, you know, worked with the group, and it went so far as to have this walk-around downtown where the six spots that the buskers set up, you know, then as now, were identified, you know, pre-identified as spots that would be good spots, you know, for buskers to be, do their thing, and not be in violation of the ordinances that we have with respect to sidewalk obstruction, et cetera. As the city manager stated, this, the whole purpose here is that this is a, really, just an organized exercise of what is really the first, it comes down to the First Amendment rights of performers to, you know, perform in public, and this council has, on a number of occasions, even since I've been on, you know, we annually seem to be presented with an opportunity to sort of affirm our support for the Bill of Rights, some other such thing, and it's great that we do that in the abstract. This is, this type of thing is affirming that constitutional right of expression of artists, you know, in the specific, that we welcome them to our city streets and we acknowledge and protect their right to do that, obviously, as long as it's in a way that doesn't, you know, interfere with their proper functioning. So I just want to express appreciation both to the city manager and the staff, the police department, who've worked on this last year, and as well as this year, and the folks who've organized it again. I think that street performing does add, as Council Whitehouse said, you know, to the flavor of downtown, and it's something we want to encourage and to see that it happens on a regular basis, you know, without this organized way, but always, always in a way that is supportive of a well-functioning downtown.
Thank you, Council Reynolds. Anything further from anyone else?
Okay, there's no vote necessary for that.
Next, we go to item B, under this portion of the agenda from Mayor Marshand, and in his stead, I will just direct your attention to three potential appointees to be considered. First, Brad Lown for the trustee of the trust funds, and Joseph Almeda for the Historic District Commission as an alternative, an alternate, rather, not an alternative, and then the Blue Ribbon Dog Committee, one, Susie Green, also for consideration. So you have those in front of you. They'll be on at the next meeting for a vote. Under my own name, I do have the draft ordinance with respect to boarding houses and permitting and how that might work for us to assist with that sort of issue. It is on, it would be, if there's a motion to move this, to bring this ordinance back for first reading at August 6th, it gives people time to look at it, and so I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. And then, moving now to Council Grasso, we have passed that portion of the agenda. Council Dwyer has a couple of comments for us, if you please.
I want to start, I have two memos in there, but I want to start with one which isn't a memo, but which I have mentioned to the Assistant Mayor, and that relates to the Police Commission, not for, not bringing up a whole range of things around the Police Commission, simply bringing up the issue of the report of the independent commission. When all of this, when all these concerns began and all this, these issues started to kind of roil around, around the commission, I checked the charter and to understand whether or not the Police Commission should be reporting to us as a council and what the analog to the commission is, and my reading of the charter, and I, if Attorney Sullivan wants to comment on this, great, is that indeed, the commission should be reporting to us, that the commission acts... that the commission acts in the role of the city manager as it relates to the department, not in our stead. And so I think in the case of the independent commission that's been set up, it's especially important that that independent commission report to us at the same time that they're reporting to the police commission, and that that be a, done in public, that it not be an independent commission of the police commission, but a commission that reports to us as well. This being potentially the start of writing what seems to me to be a confusion about whether the, who the police commission and the fire commission actually owe their, owe their allegiance to, owe their response to.
Thank you, Counsel Dwyer. Does the city attorney have a comment on that?
I wasn't really prepared to deal with the situation, the question right now. If you'd like me to write an analysis of the commission's role under the city charter for next council meeting or something.
That would be great. I'm wondering at this point, though, whether just the sense of the council would be that we might request of the police commission, that the independent commission that they have set up, the independent inquiry commission, report to us and to them in a joint meeting. I think that would be, given the, at least the calls that I've gotten and the concerns in the public, that that would be a step in the direction of kind of clarifying the issue.
Perhaps Counsel Dwyer would like to make that a motion.
Yes.
If so, could we get a second?
I would second that.
Discussion. Seeing none, Counsel Whitehouse.
I want the motion read and heard once more.
Sure. I think her motion is to request that a public report be provided to the city council of the additional investigation being requested by the police commission through the appointed individuals that they have asked to do this investigation.
At the same time.
At the same time.
At the same time, that we get a report at the same time. Do you have a comment?
Yes.
Question, Counsel Whitehouse.
I can provide my counsel with a report that was given back in the year 1994 of an internal investigation where a sexual harassment issue took place and how it was handled. It was handled internally. It was handled by our city attorney and our special committee. And I can provide you with a report, and it was done very professionally, within house. That's what the commission is for.
Thank you, Counsel Whitehouse. Counsel Smith.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just, just one question, I guess, more for the city attorney. While I believe it, and will be voting in favor of this, I am concerned with one issue, and that is if it, if there's a personnel issue, how does that hand, how does that take place in a public setting? Or would that have to be done, the first part of the meeting may be done behind closed doors, and then the public setting being able to be out there to allow the information to be flowed without releasing personnel and personnel information?
The independent review committee, which has been appointed by the police commission, has been requested by the police commission to be sensitive to personnel issues and confidential issues, so that ideally, the work product of the independent review committee will be formulated in such a way that it can be available. All I guess I can really say at this point is, the point that you've made is on everyone's mind.
Sure.
Further questions or comments?
I, I guess I'm, like I said, I'll be in voting favor of this. I'm just very leery and I want to be extremely careful over the sensitivity and the personal and personnel information being out there. There's already been, one person obviously has put some information out there that, that has caused an uproar. And I would hate to be setting this as a mandate where that, we could perpetuate that in any fashion.
Right. And, and actually, I certainly didn't intend that. My, my intention is more that we, as council, be a, an audience for the independent commission, and not that it necessarily be, even in public session, if, if that's deemed inappropriate.
Thank you. I feel more comfortable.
I think the record's clear at this point. Any further questions or comments or discussion on this issue? If not, we'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed. That's unanimous.
Okay, easier.
Counsel Dwyer.
Easier things. The, the memo that's in there about recognition of board service, we all received a letter from Ellen Feinberg, and Ellen had made a suggestion in that letter, and I actually wanted to kind of build on her suggestion, because I, I thought it was a very good one. And that is that, while we've all, we've all taught, you know, done a lot this year around term limits, and I know there's some feelings on the part of different people about, you know, whether that's a good idea or not. I think Ellen was right in kind of taking the positive spin on that, that what we haven't done in all of that is to acknowledge how much work our city boards do. And this, so the suggestion is that we annually recognize that, and that we use that as an opportunity to do a couple of things. It builds on a suggestion that Counsel Whitehouse had had at one point in time, that it would be a chance to both clarify for the members of the public what the roles of our different boards are, acknowledge who's serving on our boards, recognize those who have served and who are retiring, and identify anticipated vacancies that would be coming up in the year, and then alert citizens to that possibility. So I like to kind of put all those in one package and make it a regular annual part. I, I could envision the members of our boards here filling the chambers to really be seen as those who serve the public, and our chance to acknowledge them. I think sometimes it's discouraging to members of committees when we, as a council, don't necessarily vote in favor of something that they've worked on, et cetera. So we do need a chance to acknowledge what they do and how they do it.
Counsel Dwyer, and before we, I noticed Counsel Smith will get there. Would you be inclined to render that as a motion, and I'll just, I'll just intercede and say, I think the bailiwick here is the mayor's, so that you would want to refer this to the mayor for a report back?
Yes, exactly.
And, and so that would be her motion, would, if there's a second, then, second, and then Counsel Smith.
Thank you. And I absolutely agree with the concept, the, because, you know, it does one more thing as well, is it gives us a chance to recruit, maybe someone has left one board and maybe recruit them into another board as well. And the, and another point that came out is, I know when I was, had ended my time on the planning board and ended my time on the HGC, I never received an official letter saying, "Thank you." I know we always accept when someone has done, whether they resign or whatever, that we accept it with regrets. But I think that we should, I received letters when I was first appointed saying, you know, "Congratulations, thank you," and so forth. But I never got anything saying, "We're done." And I think that was a bit of confusion that happened recently here.
Yes.
And I would like it, if there's a friendly amendment to add to that, that that be part of the report, that it becomes a standard, that a letter always goes back out to let somebody know.
Thank you, Counsel Smith. Noted for the record. Again, we'll refer this to the mayor for a report back. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed. Good, I didn't cut anyone off in debate. So no one's yelling at me. Next, we have Counsel Dwyer with City Recreation Field.
All right, this is just a, I don't know what this is. And I gave my copy to the school board, so, let me look at this. It's an opportunity for us to clarify what we want to know about capacities and uses of existing fields for these whole, the whole set of decisions that lie ahead of us. Both decisions around the middle school, what we want to put in the CIP, et cetera. And there's been so much talk, and, you know, some of it's through the city, the study circles about what we need, what we don't need, what we could have, you know, et cetera, that I thought before we asked for a report, it would be useful for us to identify what we want to know. And so all this is, is a first crack at saying, here's what I feel I would need to know over the coming year, as we're going to have to be making a lot of decisions about fields. Now, I know that Russ Wilson probably has a lot of this information already, but, and not necessarily for talking about tonight, but I just wanted to kind of get it out there, that as counselors, if we feel that we're going to need to know some things about fields, that we try to put all that in one package, so that the report that comes back to us is, is an efficient use of time.
Thank you. Actually, I'm going to, we'll, we'll note that Counsel Dwyer with no objection, that's a motion to refer to the recreation board for a report back.
Well.
Or does the city manager have a comment?
City manager.
Well, I would suggest that just send it over to, I mean, it can go, it's going to eventually go to the recreation board, but.
Yeah.
Why don't you send it over to me? I've already started, asked Russ to start taking a look at this, and he can bring it to the recreation board. And it'll be a combination of recreation board and school board.
Right.
It's not just going to be recreation board.
That's perfect for Russ.
Yeah, so if it comes over, if it comes over to me, then I'll get a report back.
A second.
All right, that's a motion to the city manager for a report backs, offered by Counsel Dwyer, seconded by Counsel Smith. Any discussion?
I just.
Counsel Whitehouse.
Another thing I think should be included, and I, and I hope you give it some thought before you say no, and that is, let's do some comparison with other cities like Dover and Rochester.
We have that information.
With the amount of municipal playing fields that they have compared with ours.
Well.
I mean, we, we do it with, with salaries and with benefits when it comes to contracts, but I'm talking municipal fields per square footage and availability.
Yeah, I, Russ has done that, I think, for the recreation board.
Never seen, never seen anything like that.
He's done that.
Really?
Yeah, he's done it for the recreation board. I think that's acceptable to the maker in the second. Counselor Penelakis.
No, I, I just want, I read over what she said here, and I just, I just want you to know that these fields need some relief.
Right.
Amen. But we can't make that decision without the information. Anyone further? We've got a question before us. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed. Passes. Counselor Reynolds.
Thank you, Assistant Mayor. Let me double check here and see which one is.
You have green building up first.
Okay, we got two items. The first one, the green building costs and benefits. Again, just wanted to include, thank you, the city manager, for, for making the copies, information that I wanted to share with all of you, to which I've referred in remarks earlier, and the last time we talked. Pertinent to a number of discussions that, you know, that we'll have, I hope, in the future, but specifically the one currently, the fire station. It's basically the most comprehensive study that, that I know of. It happens to be actually four years old by now, but if anything, that, that makes it, that makes the information contained, well, let me elaborate. The most important thing you need to look at, the need to know, is, is from page three of the report. It's, it's page four on the copy that we have. You know, John's pagination at the top says page four. It's page three of the report. There's a figure, a bar chart, that shows the results of this study, which was a survey of something like 35 green buildings from across the country. This was a study that was done originally by the request of a task force, the California Green Buildings Task Force, but it was, it was a survey of, of green buildings represent, from across the country. Then this report that you have is one that was done, it was, the same study was kind of repackaged and condensed for the Massachusetts Technology Collaborative, but the same underlying information. And basically, what that bar chart shows you is that even back in 2003, the price premium for green buildings ranged from 0.66, less than 1%, to a high of 6.5%. There was only one building at that level, the platinum level. But the main point there is, is green buildings, silver rated, as our library is going to be, as we've heard, we expect, and even gold rated buildings, there were six in the sample, the price premium was in the neighborhood of 2%. Okay, 2%. And the point I want to make, I made for about, this, this information being 2003 information, with the proliferation of, of green building expertise and the number of green buildings being built, and the firms that are involved, and all the rest of it ramping up in the years since, the price premium for, for green buildings is going down, not up. So I supply this information to you, just relevant to, again, the immediate discussion where, you know, what we're hearing, the way the issue's being framed, that, you know, we're on track to design this new fire station, we have a budget of 3.65 million, the initial estimate from the firm that we've retained, you know, is 5 million, and somehow that is the fault that we're, you know, that's due to the fact that we're designing green. That just cannot be so. All right? It's not a 50% premium to design a green building. It's 2% or less. And so I'll be, you know, having this conversation ongoing with the, with the fire station committee, with our fire department, our fire commission. I want us, you know, to have a first-class fire station. The city deserves it. We know that green buildings are a good investment from what we've, you know, just what we've learned in doing our library. And so I hope that what we'll be able to do in terms of that fire station design process is get to a point where, you know, if the cost estimate is 5 million because construction costs have ramped up substantially in the last three years, that's one thing, and then we need to reconsider the figure that we've budgeted. But it's not due to the fact that we're designing a green building. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Reynolds. Counsel Reynolds, you've also requested a brief continuing legal education seminar from Attorney Sullivan on the issue of spot zoning.
Yes, yes. And I, what's in the package for you is just the letter where I, I requested that Bob answer a question for us, and I appreciate the fact that he.
Okay.
He worked on that and has provided us tonight with a memorandum in which he discusses it. Even I haven't had time to review that. It's the time we got it tonight. But basically, this was a, my letter to him was a formalization of an inquiry I'd made by email.
Okay.
I, I thought it was more, he had said, and I agreed, more appropriate to put it on the record. But basically, you know, in the, in the course of the recent discussion of the, the PUD, there was, this term was used. I think there was enough conflation of issues around, you know, with the discussion we had, that ended up kind of being an up or down vote on, on a particular project when it really shouldn't have been. And I think that we ought not to have that compounded by the use of a term, as I said in my letter, which, you know, some members of the public used, and then other members of the council have used, this term, which I think is kind of a loaded term, you know, spot zoning. And so I thought it would be helpful for us to clarify the definition of that, so that as we go forward, we can be clear here at the policymaking level and not, well, I say, we can avoid using terms, or what we can do is, is we can ensure that the way we talk about the issues is accurate, and that we don't contribute to confusion out there in the public. Thanks.
Thank you, and thank you to Attorney Sullivan for providing that fascinating memorandum. Now, let's proceed to Counsel Penelakis regarding funding for the African burial ground. Counsel Penelakis.
I, I, in the letter that I wrote, I would like to request that the city council authorize the city manager to expend up to 50% of the cost of the African burial ground from UDAG funds, with the remaining 50% be raised privately. Therefore, for, for every $1 raised, $1 would be available from UDAG for, for their activities, as you are aware. We've done this project before. And I think that we're now moving on the African burial ground with the designs and concepts, and that we need to get something clarified towards funding to the.
Thank you, Counsel Penelakis. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Thank you, Counsel Whitehouse.
Speak on my second.
Counsel Whitehouse.
Well, first of all, I want to ask the city manager if we have to go through Economic Development Commission. They, the budget is set by them people, EDC.
Right.
And, and here we are, using their funds. I, I think they have to get the approval of the members of the EDC.
Can I speak to that?
If the city manager would care to speak to it.
Yes, I would. I, the, the way it works, counselors, is, is the city council's prerogative to utilize UDAG funds. The policy that's in place for the Economic Development Commission is that they are allowed to budget up to 75% of the earnings from the UDAG fund for their budget. If they go beyond the 75%, then it needs to come back to the city council for a waiver. The council is the ultimate authority on how it can use the UDAG funds, because the policy was created by the city council. The, the policy can be overridden by the city council. And the policy was put in place specifically for the EDC to have some benefit of knowing in advance what they'll absolutely have. Going beyond that, we've gone beyond that in the past, where the city councils had to take specific votes on monies over and above that 75%.
That all sounds good, Mr. City Manager, but as a That all sounds good, Mr. City Manager, but as a matter of courtesy, and when the budget is put together, there should have been a line item in the budget stating that either contingency or a line item which would allow money to be used.
Your Honor, may I speak to that? Counselor Whitehouse, do you have anything further?
No.
You, okay, city manager, please.
May I speak to that? First of all, this is city, this is Counselor Pentelakis's proposal, not the city manager's proposal. That's number one. So, number two, I wouldn't know this in advance, would I?
No.
Okay.
Okay. With that clarified, Counselor Grasso.
We should go back and, as a matter of courtesy.
Good, that's up to the city council. Anything further?
I've never seen, I'm just, you've never seen one.
Wait a minute, please.
What's that?
I'm not going to gavel anybody down. Counselor Whitehouse, do you have anything further?
Give me a minute.
Please, okay, we'll be back to you. Counselor Grasso.
Thank you. I wanted to ask Counselor Pentelakis, do you have any ballpark figure on how much you think the total would be?
I don't think they've come up with a figure yet, because there was four designs shown, and I think each one is a little bit different in price and whatnot, but this was just a process to get started, to see if we could get the money, number one, or whatever was going to happen.
I, I would feel more comfortable if I knew where the ballpark was, if we're talking twenty-five thousand or seventy-five thousand.
May I make a suggestion? City manager, if you please.
Maybe what we do here is, in keeping and fulfilling both Counselor Pentelakis's and Counselor Whitehouse's concerns, maybe what we do is, we, we basically make the motion that, that the, that it would be anticipated to use UDAG funds with, once the design has been completed and the cost estimates, that it come back to the city council for any final approval.
I like that.
Is that acceptable to the maker?
Yes, that's acceptable. I just wanted a process started.
And acceptable to the second.
Thank you, Counselor Whitehouse, and I would also ask, I presume that the, the committee is in line with this as well?
Yeah, what I would do is, if that would, if this passes, what I would do is...
Will the African burial committee, I presume, win?
Are you in sync?
All I want to say is, as chairman of the African burial...
That's why I thought I'd ask you.
I thought it'd be appropriate to wait until we know what we need before we ask for it.
Right. So, in this case, we've cured that, and so...
Well, I withdraw my motion then, the whole thing, and we'll just start out.
The chair is going to take executive privilege here and caution you to say, "If you don't withdraw it, we've made it conditional." That would speak to Counselor Hines' concerns, because we're not voting to do something without the ability to not do it. We've just stated an intention to consider it that way.
It gives, also, and it gives me the opportunity to put in the capital plan to identify, and then in the capital plan, what I'll do is, I'll identify UDAG funds fifty percent.
That was going to be my question. I was confused about how this would relate to the capital.
Counsel, Counsel Dwyer, anything further? Counselor Pentelakis.
Yes, this has been in our folder since last Thursday, it was dropped at our desk. If Counselor Hines didn't agree with it, or Counselor Whitehouse didn't agree with it, they could have called me and said, "This isn't the proper way to do it." I did it what I saw has been done prior to this, to get projects started, to know where we were going to go from funding other than to the taxpayers.
Okay, thank you. Now, at this point, I think we know where we are. We've made the motion conditional in nature. Are we prepared to vote, or is there further discussion? That being said, let's call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Counselor Smith.
Thank you, Your Honor. First, I'd like to make a motion to accept our traffic and safety meeting that was held on June fourteenth. Is there a second?
So move, Your Honor.
Have a motion, we have, have a second. Counselor Smith?
Is there any questions that we had on that? A lot of them were placing crosswalks, but the hour's getting late. I won't go through it in detail unless someone has a specific question.
Any questions for Counselor Smith regarding the report?
Seeing none.
Seeing none, we'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Item two, Counselor Smith.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a request to approve the action sheet for, for our meeting, traffic and safety meeting held June twenty-eighth.
All in favor? Oh, wait, no second. Do we have a second? Thank you, Counselor Whitehouse. All in favor?
This is one that was specifically to the Parade Mall. This was the approval of the traffic and safety for the Parade Mall project. Unless someone has any specific questions, I'll ask for the question to be called.
He has asked that the question be called. It's made and duly seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, Your Honor. Moving on now to our parking committee action sheet minutes of June fourteenth. The big one on this one, I, oh, I'll ask for, if there is a, I'd like to make the motion to approve it. There's a second?
Second.
Thank you, we have a second. Counselor Smith?
Just a big one on here is the Parrot Avenue lot, is that we're, we're going to begin more enforcement of the municipal lots for, in the post-period, anything going over seventy-two hour time limit to try to really get cars to be moved along. That's one I really just want to point out to the public.
Thank you, Counselor Smith. Any questions or comments?
That will require an ordinance change.
Okay, noted, Counselor Smith. Any questions or comments for Counselor Smith? If not, we have a, a motion duly seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous, and now, we are with item three. Counselor Smith?
Thank you, and I will be brief on this one. There's a terrific new program that has begun in the downtown, throughout downtown, called the Bi-Local Program, that's been started. A lot of businesses have joined in, and it's not just retail businesses that have gotten involved with this. It's to also to have people attempt to use, not only retail services, but business services throughout the downtown, or through local programs. It's not only just that the business is local, but the residents are locals, and it's an attempt to be able to perpetuate the economics of the city. If you, if you, if I have a downtown business, I will do business for our website design. I do, I use a local business as opposed to somebody out on the internet type thing. And it got me to thinking, and I have had a brief conversation with the city manager about this, but I would like to really try to make it as a policy of the city to truly that we, always when we look at our RFPs and so forth, to give consideration for doing businesses locally. He's assured me that it's something that he, you know, that it's usually done. It gets difficult when it gets into the, the process, but I'm hoping that when the bid process goes out, that we do attempt to look at local firms for all of our bidding, whether it be an architectural firm for the school, or, you know, whatever services the city may require. And then going one step further on that, it even goes in, in, in further, and again, I've spoken to the city manager on this, is that, you know, our banking that the city uses. Currently, we use a, you know, we use a bank that is owned by a foreign-owned business. I'd like to see if we could possibly look at a banking firm within the city that is a, at least a US company, if not one that is based here in Portsmouth, because we do have a commercial bank based here in Portsmouth. Granted, they have, their overall holding company is one that is now based, I believe, in Connecticut, as it used to be in, in Rhode Island. I mean, excuse me, in Vermont, but without getting into specifics. But my intent is, I would like it to be more of a policy of the city to attempt to do business locally, such as the, the downtown and the, and the businesses of Portsmouth are attempting to do with this Bi-Local Program.
This is going to require a motion in order for us to have discussion, if we're going to. Counselor Smith, are you going to make a basic motion in that regard?
Basic motion would be that the city manager to, for a report back of, or not even a report back, to where necessary and if possible, to give consideration to, to local businesses.
If I might, if I might, Counselor Smith, that I'll respectfully suggest, if it goes to the city manager for a report back, given that this sort of thing could have fairly complex ramifications, it might be appropriate to have a report back, and then we can discuss it a little further, but...
Good, and, and I'll, I'll accept that.
Okay, second, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion.
Just wanted to make the comment.
Counselor Grasso.
Thank you, but when we were constructing the, the high school, that we directed the construction company to use Bi-Local whenever possible, use local subcontractors, and didn't always mean, in this case, didn't always mean just Portsmouth, but within the area and even northern, northern Massachusetts, but instead of getting somebody to come in, you know, two hundred miles away, so, whenever possible, because it's not always possible.
Well, just one thing, so, people know, if they're up there, out there watching now, we, we bank with Citizens Bank, it's, so, I don't know if they're foreign or not, so, if they're foreign-owned, I guess I'll, I'll find out, but just want people to know that we're not banking with something offshore in the Cayman or something. It's Citizens Bank.
It's the global world.
I was trying to be sensitive without naming...
Thank you very much. Counselor Pentelakis?
Yes, I just have a question. In what you're saying, can, in using the businesses within the city, which I agree with somewhat, but is, is it in fact that one, that the business within the city would charge a higher price than the business in Kittery? You know, I mean, would we, some differential there?
I understand, and that's, that's the, as, as the city manager has said to me in the past, and just had said, "It's a slippery slope you climb when you start getting into that." I'm hoping for, that's why I say, if we report back on how this could fit in, because I, I obviously don't want to get into a situation where we're getting into, we're making fiscal promises of something that's an extremely, you know, expensive.
Yeah, and, and I will get back to you on it, but I, I just want to say, we've already done some research on it, and most communities in the state will, will obviously send out their proposals to all the locals that can participate and qualify, and when, in the event of a tie, it goes to a local. So, that's what happens, and so, we do that, and, but we can, we can look at it, there is really, I won't go any further, I'll save it for the report back.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for all your hard work and patience. Counselor Smith, you have a further comment?
Thank you, I have one more. I can either put it under my name, or is it under a miscellaneous or...
We are now officially under miscellaneous.
Thank you. This would be more for a report back from, from the mayor. It came to my attention recently that the city of Portsmouth used to have a, a committee for cruise ships back in the mid-eighties. There used to be a cruise ship committee, and they were looking at the possibilities of what it would take to bring cruise ships into the city of Portsmouth. I think I'd like, I'd like to see a report back of that possibly, to have that come back in. There's been a lot of talk about, can the city have a cruise, can we bring cruise ships into the, into the port, can we bring them into the city? We, at least, I saw personally through, through my business, what an economic boom that the tall ships gave to the, to this community recently, and, and I think it's now, let's finally put this issue to, to bed, one way or the other, is, can the, can the river sustain cruise ships? And if it is, how can we move towards that? If it can't, then we can at least get the issue resolved, one way or the other. But I'd like a report back of what happened to that cruise ship committee, and again, last one, I, I know it was running around in nineteen eighty-six.
Well, thank you. He has made this as a motion to refer it to the mayor, and since he's not here, that's an easy thing to do. Does anyone care to second it?
I'll take him.
Okay. We want a report back, and perhaps the mayor could seek the assistance and knowledge of the city, of the city manager who serves on the PDA, because I suspect some of that information will come from there. So, we have discussion, Counselor.
Yes, just a little bit of discussion, point of, of information. As I think people are aware, there, there was, I don't know if I can use the right name for the committee, but there, there was an extensive port study committee that was, I believe chaired by Senator Clark, that looked into all kinds of issues related to the port, and I believe that that would, that that report contains a pretty extensive discussion of, of the question that Counselor Smith is asking, and I, I guess I suggest that that's the first place...
No doubt, and I think we can refer that to the mayor, and I think other, other information is readily available, and has been developed over the years as well, so we'll do that. Now, with that, we are in miscellaneous. I see no one raising their hand. I thank you again for your hard work and patience. Do you have any further?
We have a motion on the table, Your Honor?
What's the motion? Oh, I didn't call a question.
Didn't call a question.
All in favor for Counselor Smith?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Back to the next question.
I move ahead, Your Honor.
Second.
All in favor?